Please be seated. Okay, before formal business starts, I'd like to remind everybody that you need to stay, for members to stay in their seats, so that we can pick up what you're speaking for the filming. I'm going to ask Hazel to now read out the apologies that we've received.
Thank you. Apologies have been received in no particular order from councillors Upton, Vastow, Jean-Louis and Bennett, that's Paul Bennett.
Thank you. Are there any apologies for absence? No. So now I'm going to call on any declarations of interest. Remember, this is only for items that are on today's agenda. councillor Bell.
Chair, I have a declaration of conflict of interest with motion one because I am a healthcare worker.
Thank you. councillor Shaw.
Thank you. In relation to motion three, the scientific consensus that man made climate change exists, I'd like to declare that I'm employed by Callow Oils, a company who sells oil and gas. I've sought advice and this should not preclude me from participation and voting as it is not directly linked to my employment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other?
Thank you. I think it's best to point out that I also work for a gas company, but I don't think it's going to prejudice anything that I say today.
Thank you. Nobody else? Okay. So just a few more words before we start the meeting. As I say, please remain seated when you are called to speak. The microphone will pick it up far better. And I'd like to remind everybody that we will have a robust debate, but in this chamber we conduct ourselves with mutual respect and we do not use personal remarks. Can I ask that there is no unnecessary talking, moving about or moving around or leaving the chamber? It is important that you switch your microphone off after speaking. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand using the yellow voting card and wait to be acknowledged by Hazel Best, who will be keeping a list of speakers. A reminder that all speeches are timed and you will hear a bleep 30 seconds before your allocated time is due to end. A 40-minute lunch break will be taken at approximately 1pm, depending on where we are on the agenda. If things are running quite late, we may also have an additional break in between now and lunchtime. I'd like also to ask you to switch your mobile phone off or to set it to silent. And also a reminder, please, that if you wish to raise a point of order, you must quote the relevant section of the constitution. Thank you. Okay, we're now moving on to agenda item two, which is public participation. We have received three requests to speak at this meeting. The first speaker is Esther Gray, who's presenting a petition regarding lower speed limits and road safety measures in Rhubery. Over to you Esther. You have three minutes to make your comment and a reminder that you will get a bleep 30 seconds before the end of your allocated time.
Thank you very much, Chair. As district councillors in Rhubery North and South, we, Peter McDonald and Esther Gray, have received the support of resident signatures to a petition which we are asking today for your attention. For many years, residents of Rhubery and North Worcestershire have voiced their concerns over the excessive speed at which vehicles travel through our village streets. This is not just a matter of inconvenience, it directly threatens the safety of our community, particularly the most vulnerable members. In Rhubery, we have two primary schools, each with a nursery, a high school, as well as two private nurseries, catering to the very young children. These institutions are centres of learning and growth for our future generations. The safety of the roads surrounding them should be a priority. Furthermore, our community includes many residents with disabilities who face daily risks due to the hazardous speeds of passing vehicles. For them and for all of us, navigating the roads has become a dangerous task. Despite the best efforts of local councillors, no tangible measures have been implemented by the county council to effectively reduce the speed of traffic on these roads. Effective traffic calming measures such as gated entrances with better signage, reduced speed limits can make a significant difference, more road traffic signs to prevent parking on pavements and at the end of road entrances and exits would considerably reduce those risks. The layout of our roads, particularly the problematic corners, amplifies this danger, making it imperative that action is taken swiftly. Personal stories abound, such as mobility vehicles used playing dodgings while trying to cross Wettie and Leach Heath Lane, and those with visual impairments struggling to judge the speed of oncoming traffic. These instances are too numerous to ignore and demand your immediate attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I have petition to be collected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Great. Thank you very much for your contribution. I will ask that you get a written response. Thank you. We're now moving on to the second speaker, which is Christopher Baker, who is also asking a question about the speed limit through the village of Hanley Castle on the B4211. Christopher, you have three minutes to ask your question and a reminder that you will hear a beep at 30 seconds before the end of your time. Over to you, Christopher.
Good morning. In 2000, the Worcestershire Village Speed Limit Initiative established a 30 mile an hour limit as a matter of rural right in rural communities. Hanley Castle was omitted from the scheme and consequently has a 40 mile an hour limit on the B4211. Hanley Castle High School with 1,147 students plus a staff of 140 is the only school in Worcestershire that does not have a 30 mile an hour limit past it. Much smaller schools in local villages have a 30 mile an hour speed limit. Since 2000, there have been changes. Traffic volumes on the B4211 have increased significantly. Volumes are destined to increase significantly more, as detailed in the South Worcestershire Development Plan. The number of students at Hanley Castle High School has increased by 20%. Housing density, as seen by road users, has substantially increased by 100%. Department for Transport Circular revised in March 2024 Para 135 states villagers should have comparable speed limits to similar roads in urban areas. It is therefore government policy that a 30 mile an hour speed limit should be the norm through villagers. In 2024, two reports were given to the parish council. A highway safety issue, an accident waiting to happen, and the road ahead, how do we get there, which set out short, medium and long-term objectives. Financial priority was given to the project. Fully funded traffic calming vast signs are now operational and white gates will be installed soon. Hanley Castle Development Plan Ref PCR2 cites speed reduction through Hanley Castle along the B4211 as one of its main priorities. In conclusion, there have been a number of RTAs in the village. Thankfully, no one was seriously hurt. However, it is only a matter of time before a serious accident and/or fatality occurs. We need to be proactive, not reactive. The 2009 Village Speed Limit Initiative provides the opportunity for advisory 20 mile an hour limits outside schools. Hanley Castle High School is excluded from this scheme. Concerned residents and the school wish to invite Cabinet member Mr Carl Perks, responsible for roads and transports, to meet on-site in Hanley Castle with a small delegation from the local community, including representatives of the parish council, local councillors, regarding the speed limit and volume of traffic. Our county councillor, Mr Tom Wells, is supportive of this initiative. Thank you.
Great. Perfect timing, you had two seconds left. Thank you very much. You will receive a written response. Thank you. We're now moving on to the third speaker, which is Reverend David Haslam, who is asking a question, asking assurances about all residents of our county will be treated in all public services with fairness and equality.
Thank you, Chair. I'm a Speke's Evesham resident of 17 years, formerly living for 35 years in multiracial areas of London. On Wednesday, August 20, I learned there was a protest about asylum seeker hotels outside the Founds Hotel in Worcester. And then on August bank holiday morning, I was present outside the Evesham Hotel when protesters arrived, although there were actually more of we welcomeers than the protesters. They claimed to be patriots waving the Union Jack, but we believe we were the real patriots who represent the true British values of welcome, kindness and care, based, of course, on Christian values. The hotel had gone into lockdown, but our presence there greatly reassured the families within. This time of protest seems to have suddenly emerged after nearly 10 years since Worcestershire welcomed its first Syrian refugees. At that time, a network of six refugee welcome groups developed around the county, volunteers who support the asylum seekers going through that lengthy and frustrating asylum process. Up until now, the county has shown its best side, with only occasional outbursts of xenophobia. However, we're now experiencing increasing polarisation and antipathy towards so-called migrant people and asylum seekers, whipped up, I'm afraid, by certain politicians, newspapers and on social media. They suggest that all our problems as a country are caused by some 5% of arrivals, that tiny proportion, who arrive here by irregular means. And I stress that as it is not illegal, under the international law our country helped to write, to come to any country and seek asylum when faced with conflict, persecution or other threats to life. Also, I would say the hotels are not a strain on our taxpayer. Most of the money comes from the overseas aid budget. So it's not spent abroad, but paid for wages of our hotel administrative and security staff, the local goods and services, profits of hotel owners and companies like Serco. All these pay their taxes and all that money remains in the British economy. We have found refugees grateful, interesting and keen to get settled here and to start contributing to our communities. I'd like to ask the county council for assurances that all residents of our county will be treated in all public services with fairness, equality and respect, that any suggestion that those who've sought safety and security here are unwelcome be immediately challenged and dismissed, and that we recover and retain our reputation as a warm, kind and tolerant community where all can feel safe and secure. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your contribution. I will ask that you receive a written response in due course. Thank you. We'll now move on to agenda item number three, which is the previous minutes. May I now sign as a correct record the amended minutes for the meeting which was held on the 10th of July? Yes, thank you. Okay, we're now on to agenda item four, which is the chair's announcements. I'd like to draw your attention to the document that was previously emailed to you. I'd like to mention with sadness the death of former Hereford and Worcester County councillor Pat Raven. I extend my condolences to Pat's family and friends at this very sad time. In addition, I would like to extend my and the council's condolences to the royal family following the death of Catherine, the Duchess of Kent. Thank you. I'd now like to ask councillor Hardman to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, I just thought that the council ought to note the death of an ex-employee of the county council, Dame Stella Rimmington. It was not widely known, certainly not by me, that she was an employee of the county council for four years and worked in the Archives Department before obviously joining the Foreign Office and then on into MI5. What makes her, of course, a note is she was the first female member of, the first female head of MI5. And I think we should be proud that somebody who started as a clerk in the Archives Department was able to make it to the very top of the Foreign Office and its associate bodies. But her interest in archives actually didn't end there because in 2004, she came back to the county when she was head of the Archives Task Force to try and improve the quality of archiving across the county and across the country. So I just thought that we ought to note this because, you know, it is interesting how an employee of ours has managed to reach the top of a tree. And she was the first actually publicly acknowledged member, head of MI5. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much for that contribution. We're now moving on to agenda item five, which is reports of the cabinet matters which require a decision. And the first item is the Treasury Management Annual Report. Please turn to pages one and two of the agenda and I'm going to invite councillor Rob Wharton to introduce the report and move the recommendations in paragraph one. And I believe that will then be seconded by the leader of the council. So over to you councillor Rob Wharton.
Thank you, Chair. This report is a backwards look at the Treasury Management performance for the financial year 2425. As part of the council's Treasury Management strategy, it needs to be approved by full council and that's the reason it's obviously come to full council. It's obviously a very factual report and sometimes could be called quite a technical report, but I'll leave it at that and take any questions anyone's got. But I move the recommendations in paragraph one.
Thank you. I'm now going to ask for representatives from each of the political groups. Oh, sorry, seconding, sorry. Would you like to second it? Sorry.
Yes, I'll second that, thank you.
Okay, so yes, now we have the responses from each of the political groups. We'll hear the group leaders first. So first of all, from the Conservative group.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. I do respond on behalf of the Conservative group and I'll be relatively brief. As the cabinet members alluded to, this is effectively a backward look and obviously we are, in terms of capital, a billion pound organisation. And I think that the report for 2425 clearly sets out that there's been, obviously, as you would expect, for an upper tier authority that builds new schools and new roads, a new infrastructure, which is vital for all our communities across the county, a very active capital programme. And I think it's worth making the point that, and I say this because the media over the last month or two, not only in looking at the county council's finances but also district council's finances as well, talks about debts. And of course, there's a difference between debt and borrowing. Many, well, of course, there is because many residents have a mortgage to purchase their house, usually their biggest capital asset. And all that the county does when it builds new schools and roads is doing exactly the same on a much larger scale. And you're putting your minimum revenue provision and you borrow over the lifetime of that asset. There are very few organisations that have multi-million pounds' worth of revenue to be able to fund capital. And this organisation has funded those capital projects, I would say, in a very sensible way, hither too. And it's really important that we do so. And of course, largely, our money is borrowed either from the Public Works Loans Board at a very reasonable rate, internal borrowing, no doubt, and sometimes borrowing between local authorities. So it's perfectly in order for there to be proper prudential borrowing. And I'll let the expert on finances within the Conservative group tell us that we're probably nowhere near the limits on prudential borrowing as an organisation.
Are there any other group leaders who'd like to speak? Councillor Robert Green.
Thank you, Chair. As has just been stressed, this is kind of looking backwards. And one of the points that we obviously need to start taking into consideration is actually we need to start looking forward. Back in June 25, I asked a question about the council's strategy in terms of how we're going to move forward with our finances. I'm still yet to receive a response to that despite several requests and a promise that I would get a response. So I look forward to seeing that at some point in the near future because it has now been almost four months. The part, though, that I am kind of interested in is obviously we're talking about 600 million pounds' worth of debt, however you want to phrase it. And at the moment, the interest rate kind of works out around about 3%, which is incredibly low at the moment. I was actually quite surprised how low it was. Do we have any fears moving forward that that will start to rise? And if so, what is the anticipated plan to try and keep control of this if we do start to see increases?
Yes, thank you, councillor. Yeah, the review you referred to is ongoing and it will be coming back to council as and when we have something to present to you. There's a lot of work to be done, as you'd imagine, and part of that will be monitoring, obviously, interest rate rises, et cetera, on the debt that we're carrying at the moment. So we will be coming back to it, it's not being missed out, it's just there's a lot of work to be done and it's going on in the background.
Thank you for answering that question. Just to remind everybody, this is a debate rather than a question time session, so you got that for free, that one, but we'll be clamping down on those in future. Okay, I'd now like to call councillor Yudle.
Thank you, it's like winning the lottery. I like to support the recommendation which we have in front of us, but I will do so with a caveat that Labour members voted against the previous budget, which has created the situation which we have before us of some significant debt. They were done despite our opposition, not with our support. The debts which are listed here and included in this report will eventually, I suspect, have a significant impact on service provision with the ability to, in the future, with our overability to pay back the debt, having an impact on our provision to provide services for the public. I am very concerned about that and would be very interested to know from the leader of the council and/or others, what kind of assets we're looking at for disposal in order to protect service provision in the future.
Thank you. I'm now going to call councillor Hardman.
Thank you very much, chairman. Yes, I do support the recommendations and I'd just draw members' attention to paragraph 11, because managing the treasury operations is not only complex but also quite nerve-wracking because of two members of the council have just expressed a belief that clearly the government's strategy, and indeed actually the independent, still the Independent Bank of England's, optimism over falling into straits is going to turn out not to be true. I would agree with them, I think it's going to be higher for longer. While many people say this is a significant debt, I would just draw to attention that if you take an average of debt across all the councils in the country, you will find that our debt is actually some 500 pounds less than the average, which is really quite a significant thing. A comment has been made about the impact on the revenue budget, and indeed, that is why we've been so careful over the question of PFI and other methods of borrowing, and the majority of our borrowing is done with the treasury, because we understand that it does have an impact on the revenue line. But I would draw your attention that if we hadn't taken on debt, there would be no new schools in the Wye Forest, there would be no waste-to-energy plant, there would be no Southern Link, there would be no raising of the New Road or indeed Marina Road. So this money has not been spent and just built up recklessly in some random way. It's been done to support council strategy.
I'm now going to call on councillor Kent. You've got three minutes.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, council. It's quite interesting, I asked the question this morning, I haven't got a definitive answer yet, but how much of this 600 million is actually owed to the government through the Public Works Loans Board, which is where we get our borrowing from in the vast majority of cases? And we've all talked about underfunding in councils, it's the situation for pretty much every upper tier council across the whole of the country. So it seems a bit confusing to me, really, that the government on one hand is giving us stuff and the money to be able to do the things we've got to do for our residents, but on the other hand, they're making us borrow it. I mean, effectively, this money is just going around in circles. So if we were to default on this 600 million, well, at least then the government would have to pay for what they should have put up in the first place.
Thank you. And I'm going to call councillor Jenkins.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of points about our levels of debt or borrowing. I mean, yes, they are around about average. I think the issue we have is over the years, below average, yeah, sorry councillor Hardman, yes. And the point is, yes, our level of borrowing is not unusual. I think the trouble I have is maybe some of the decisions made in the past, and particularly, I think something maybe going forward that we need to take into account, is the poor estimates before we actually build things. So for example, I heard someone mention Keepax Bridge to my left. Yeah, the initial estimate was about a quarter of what the actual cost was and is similar to the one bridge in Evesham. So it's very important when we do decide to go ahead with a project that we actually know what the actual cost will be when we make a decision. So it's very easy to make a decision, say this bridge only cost a few million, brilliant, let's go ahead and make it. Then it ends up being 16, 17 million. That's when bad decisions are made. So I think that was just the point I wanted to make. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm now going to call on councillor Orcott.
Chair, thank you. And as it is comments, not questions, I will slightly rephrase, so bear with me. Yeah, this report is on treasury management, so the key thing is looking at investments and borrowing. But I noticed there is no reference to the 33.6 million exceptional financial support, which was granted to this council by national government for 25/26. So I would just like to comment that I would have expected to see something in the report on whether the council is anticipating drawing down on this loan and if so, by how much. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to call on councillor Birch.
Thank you, chairman. And I may answer my own group leader's question here. In terms of the borrowing that we have of that figure, 372 million is made up of the Public Works Loan Board, 287.7 million on a fixed rate loan and 84.3 on an energy from waste loan. So it's important to note that over 50% of our borrowing is owed to the government. It's taxpayers' money going back to the taxpayer, one way or another. So it's important that when cabinet come to review the capital programme and come to look at borrowing, that we remember that that money is going back to the taxpayer in one form or another. It's money that we're able to invest here in Worcestershire, ensuring that it goes as locally as possible. And if we're to just give that up and refuse those public works loans going forward, then that's money that may still be charged to our taxpayer but not necessarily benefit them.
Thank you. I see no other request to speak. Can I now ask the mover to sum up?
Thank you, Chair. Just using councillor Hart's analogy of everyone's got a mortgage, that's very true. But if you're struggling to pay the monthly repayments back, you don't extend the mortgage on building a new extension at the back of the house. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I've got a card. I've got one. Thank you. Can I ask those who are against to raise their hands? Are there any abstentions? No, thank you. That's carried, thank you. Okay, the next item is item 5B, Report of the Cabinet. This is decisions taken. This report deals with the decisions already taken by the cabinet and it is on pages three to six of your agenda pack. I would remind you to that specific questions may be asked about the items in the report. This is an opportunity to ask relevant questions, not to make speeches on matters which have already been decided. The reports will be taken section by section and questions will be restricted to a maximum of two minutes per item, per councillor. So please ask your question clearly and concisely. Questions will be taken in batches of three. And if necessary, written replies will be provided by the leader or the relevant cabinet member. Right. Okay, so has anybody got any questions on this particular cabinet report? Councillor Yudle?
Thank you, Chair. It's regarding the Worcester City Secondary Schools update. I don't disagree with the actions and suggestions in this report, but I wonder if it goes far enough. And if I may, I'll repeat a question which I asked at cabinet, because representing West Worcester as I do, I know Christopher Whitehead Language College is now at or above capacity, with very little ability to expand. We are witnessing the expansion of West Worcester with between 6,000 to 8,000 new homes being built, with no surplus capacity for high school provision. If we're not careful, we will have a ticking educational time bomb which could explode in our faces and could damage the educational opportunities of thousands of children. So what action is being taken to relieve the pressure in West Worcester? And when will we see plans for a new high school in the St John's area of the city? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I call on councillor Riaz.
Thank you, Chair. Pretty straightforward, I am quite happy with some of the stuff that's been presented in the report, and specifically the use of County Hall. However, I do have major concerns around the lack of consultation in and around the immediate area of Spechley Road, Nunnery Lane and Hillu Road regarding these proposals. Will the cabinet member please confirm that they will consult with local residents? We already have a high school, a local primary school, a college within the vicinity and up to 3,000 students attending the area. This will just add the pressures on local parking and congestion and all the associated issues around road safety. Could he confirm that they will consult with local residents on this issue?
Thank you. If I have read this correctly, we've known about insufficient spaces in secondary schools for a while. And so in September 26, we have a shortage of 90 secondary school spaces and in September 27 of 45. And it appears from this report that we're just going to allow our Worcester children to be bumped off to Malvern to go to high school. I would like to ask for September 26, can more urgent action be taken, even if it's to the extent of mobile classrooms? And for September 27, we have more time, I would like to see this county support schools in Worcester and approve the facilities there to enable these two board years to be able to go through. I really do not think we should be heightening our children off to Malvern. And I would like to see some urgent action on this. Thank you.
Sorry, ma'am, what was the question?
The question is, can we put some of the 2.6 million capital funding into our Worcester schools to enable the 26 and 27 cohorts to attend Worcester schools instead of Malvern? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to ask councillor Foster to reply.
Yes, the likelihood of a new high school at St John's, given the financial emergency of the council is nil. Yes, we'll consult with local residents, obviously. Parking issues around schools are prevalent everywhere. And no, September 26/27, there won't be any local mobile classrooms on Worcester schools. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next set of questions, have we answered all three questions or not? Yeah, okay. Councillor Monk, do you think you can answer that one? Is this councillor Wharton that answers that one? Councillor Wharton, are you happy to respond to the councillor Riaz's question?
It's sorry, it's got a bit confusing. So the first report should have just been questions on Worcester City Secondary. I think the chair's going to use this discretion to say that councillor Wharton could take the question from councillor Riaz from County Hall now. And so at the moment, we're just taking questions on the Worcester City Secondary Sufficiency and Place Planning Report.
Can I apologise, could you ask you to repeat the question, please?
Councillor Wharton, the question was around consultation around any proposal at County Hall, given it being in the vicinity of local schools, colleges and the amount of congestion.
Yes, there will be a decree of consultation. Thank you. Have we now answered those questions now? Fine. Okay, we're now moving on to the next set of three questions. Which question have we now answered?
I just went to the microphone before to say that we are taking questions on Worcester City Secondary Sufficiency. We had used the discretion because councillor Riaz had moved on to County Hall, so I thought I'd made that clear. So we're now back on taking questions and we're going down the list now of people who have put their hand up. Your name's on the list.
So this is the question now on secondary schools. So next person is councillor Burt Wright-Green.
Thank you, Chair. We're in a situation where the development plan, the South Worcestershire Development Plan, is coming to the point where it should be adopted and the Parkway Newtown is part of that, which is three miles from the, well, less than three miles, from the catchment area of Nunnery Wood. Have we looked at the strategic development plan and started to look at whether, bearing in mind how many schools are going to be built in that new town, whether we can work with developers to start to accelerate that faster so that we can actually start getting investment from those developers, so we can start to get the money out of them? Because the quicker we start to move on this, the quicker we can actually get money we don't have to put in, we can take their contributions. And if we work with them, there's a chance we can actually put a school far closer to these young people in Worcester. We'll only have to travel a couple of miles rather than eight miles. And I've estimated during rush hour, that's about a 35-minute journey compared to about a 12-minute journey.
Thank you. Councillor Cross?
Thank you, Chair. Relating to item, paragraph eight on page four, Cabinet feasibility study about the County Hall site, just want to inquire about whether this feasibility study includes... So schools? This is schools.
Yeah, paragraph eight does refer to the Worcester, so you're right, this is a question on the school.
So, thank you. The final paragraph on the section relating to schools. Thank you, everybody. So does this feasibility study include provision for SEND pupils? Because that's a growing need and constantly with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor May?
Yes, thank you very much, chairman, and good morning, council. I call upon the cabinet member to have a whole new revision and a strategic approach to education. The reason I say is when you contract the provision of education in the centre of our county, it has significant impacts across the rest of the county. One example of this is that we don't carry 5% capacity in Bromsgrove. We're out to a district plan that the new government has said we have to have, build 12,121 homes by 2043. We are currently busing children from Windrush in Withall on a daily basis across to Waisley Hills. We are now looking at moving, educating children in Witchaven...
Can I just say, you need to move to a question.
Yes, I am, I am, chairman. But there needs to be a background, some information here. We are busing children around. When I look and I'm told by the assistant director that the new cost of £120,000 per year for six years to bus 90 children, do you think that's good use of taxpayers' money when you got elected off the back of making cuts and significant cuts? We have a statutory duty to education. I'd like a strategic review of all education provision in Worcestershire, please.
Thank you. Councillor Foster?
As regards councillor Burt Green's comments about the forward, about getting developers to pay in relation to Parkway, you'll see in the forward plan shortly that we've just increased the contributions from S, from section 106, which is the funding from developments that was last increased, was last set at 2019. We've just increased that. But that increase is a paltry 1.2 million pounds. And so the contributions from developers, unfortunately, is very meagre in relation to the cost of building new schools. And in relation to councillor Cross's request regarding SEND provision in new capacity, again, unfortunately not. I wish that that were possible, but in this financial emergency, it is not. But I can assure him that once we reach financial stability, the first new school that this administration would build would be a SEND school. And as regards a strategic review, a further strategic review, no, we've already taken the decision, I'm sorry to say.
Thank you. Right, next set of three questions. Right, next set of three questions, councillor Pingery.
Thank you, Chair. My question is, if we're increasing the number of secondary school places, but we aren't building a new school, we already know that many of the schools in Worcester simply don't have the space to expand, they can't build more blocks, because if you build more blocks and more classrooms, you're taking away recreational space, you're taking away space for students to do sports. So, they simply can't expand. So, does the Cabinet member support increasing the number of students in each class? And if so, what additional support will there be for teachers, if this takes place? Will there be additional staff? We also aren't building any SEND places in Worcestershire, so what additional support will there be for SEND support within the high schools in Worcestershire? Because we're going to have more students with specific needs in our high schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kent.
I'm a little confused and a bit shocked by the quality of the answers to the questions that really a lot of my colleagues and opposition members as well are raising. This is a critical situation for our children, and looking at point seven and eight, I do wonder what sort of time the Cabinet member thinks is acceptable for the children of Worcestershire to spend on a bus because they don't understand capital expenditure and how you borrow to put the investment in for the residents of Worcestershire. And the other thing, having, you know, everybody's now aware that we had a briefing as a Conservative group on the school situation, well, to me, it's absolutely crystal clear what we need to do. The cost difference, and I think councillor from Worcester City just raised the situation with places in Worcester City, is that it costs as much money to expand the core schools in Worcester as it would do to build a new school on the site of County Hall. So, instead of all this procrastination and obstruction in terms of giving the decisions, could I ask the Cabinet member why he doesn't just get on with it, knock down County Hall and build a school there that can then leave us with the capacity of those other schools in Worcester for future years?
Councillor James.
Thank you, Chair. A number of my residents choose to engage in independent education in Worcester City, and when I talk to them, they are terrified that this shambolic government has put a VAT on it and are pushing people out of the independent sector. Can I please have absolute clarity from the Cabinet member that in all provision, they are looking at the children that will lose friendship, community and choice based upon this government, and that they will have a place in whatever provision that looks like? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to ask councillor Foster to respond to those three questions. Thank you.
In relation to the first question, no, the number in each class won't be increased. We don't, we do have the schools that we have, the officers have approached, are happy to expand their schools. And as regards the SEND request, council approved 30.1 million pounds of expanding SEND capacity in mainstream schools in February 25. That capital and those planned expansions are retained in the capital programme. We haven't changed that at all. As regards councillor Kent's, we don't understand capital expenditure. Fortunately, we understand capital expenditure far more than the previous Conservative administration. And I would draw his attention to the Worcester news, the fact that his opposition colleagues in his rainbow, in his rainbow coalition actually say that the councils were a little bit debt. Councillor Kent continues on the same theme with his proposed reckless expenditure. Let me remind him of the figures. He actually says, we just get on with it to build the new...
Hang on a second, a point of order's been raised.
I'd like him right to respond, please, Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'm named, yes. But let him finish first.
Yes, right. So, I'd like to remind councillor Kent of the figures. In the capital decision, in the cabinet decision we took, we planned by expanding Worcester City Schools to borrow a minimal amount of money, whereas in building the new school, the cost to the council would be borrowing an extra 33.63 million pounds. And the capital 63 million would be made by borrowing that 33 million. Basic need, 13 million, capital receipts, 10 million, and S106 money, 4.88 million. And that would actually make the financial emergency which we are in much worse. And that is why we've taken the decision to expand the existing Worcester schools with their cooperation.
Thank you. Councillor Kent, could you expand on what your point of order is?
Well, the figures just given out by the Cabinet member are completely incorrect. The cost of expanding the Worcester City, the Worcester Core Schools is some 24 million for 28, 29, I believe, and the cost of a new school at County Hall is some 25 million. So, I'm afraid his figures are incorrect. And to be honest, having listened to the rambling, I do wonder whether he's the right person in the right job.
Excuse me, the figures...
I think I'm being asked to, so I think councillor Kent had intervened before because he was named. So, there is procedural standing order 19.14, which refers to personal explanation. You might just need to clarify what point you were saying you perhaps were being misquoted on.
I think he said, I was reckless. Yeah? As I wasn't leader at the time, I think it's probably doubtful I was reckless, and all of the decisions taken by the County Council were voted on and passed. But at the end of the day, the figures, I would like to draw a point of order, because the Cabinet member has just given out figures that are incorrect in this meeting. Now, he might not understand them, he might not understand the borrowing, but they were wrong. We've had a recent briefing with the officers, and it's quite clear that the cost of developing places for 28, 29 in Worcestershire are within 1 million pounds of the cost of the replacement of a school on County Hall site. Now, I've dropped those figures in this meeting, I'm sure he will want to go away and check them, but he has given incorrect information over on this meeting. And to be brutally honest, it does not seem for me to have any grasp of the portfolio that he's got.
Right, sorry, we're going to have to move on, but I'm going to give you just one moment just to respond to that, and then we'll move on. Thank you.
Yes, councillor Kent is completely wrong. Obviously, he had the briefing by the officers, but he didn't listen to what they had to say. Because the expansion at Worcester City Schools, the capital required is 29.5 million pounds, where the borrowing would just be 3.96 million. Basic need is 10 million, capital receipts are 10.7 million, and S106 funding is 4.8 million. How councillor Kent can consider that borrowing just 3.96 million compared with borrowing a 33 million for a new school is absolutely, well, he just doesn't understand.
Thank you. We're going to move on now to the next set of questions.
Do I not get my answer? So, I thought we were answering in three. May have forgotten.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. You'll need to get written response to that.
Yes, good morning, Chair, and good morning, Council. I'm very pleased to see so many people here. I understand how important it is for everybody to try and make every meeting and not be absent. I asked the question at Cabinet, and you were kind enough to give me a positive answer. I feel I should ask the question again, because there were only a few councillors actually at the last Cabinet meeting, and I think it's important that people hear the answer. Obviously, if we're going to have to bus children around the county, could you just confirm again that parents or guardians will not be picking up the tab to pay for these bus journeys? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Harman.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. It's been an interesting debate, because I think it shows the flaws in Reform's thinking. We are the strategic authority, and the bit that worries me the most is that we are not taking account of the district council's plans. The County Council is going to have to deal with considerable school expansion, the 2,000 homes along the Southern Link. So, it is not acceptable, I don't think. Since those 2,000 houses that will be built under Southern Link will pay on average 2,000 pounds in council tax, in my view, if you take a strategic approach to this, you would be easily able to build a new school for these children. And the issue that you face is you're going to fail an entire generation because you will be busing children around the county at vast expense. My mother was very keen on saying, in life, you sometimes miss the bus, but take sure you've run for it. In my view, you're still looking for where the stop is.
I'm sorry, was there a question there?
Have you considered the district's emerging strategic plans and the effect that will have for an entire generation of children? Because you are making reckless decisions that are short-term and ignorant.
Thank you. Okay, third question on this set, there is councillor Victory.
Thank you, Chair and Council. The proposal is to bus children from South Worcestershire to the Chase School in Malvern. I seriously question the wisdom of this, for the benefit of the children and for the supposed savings in cost. This is a cost over a long period of time and an inconvenience to the users of the service, and furthermore, to the local area which I represent. There is a capacity at the Chase School to take extra students, but that's not the point. We ought to be planning for the future, and the future is much more population in this area. So, why is there so much procrastination from the administration over building new schools? I was part of the planning and regulatory decision to build or to approve the building of a new school adjacent to the hospital. There were many positive assets from this proposal, but it seems that that has simply been shelved, whereas it could well have solved a lot of these problems. So, my question is, what is the value of the current policy? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Foster.
Yes, these are much easier questions to answer. Yes, busing the children, yes, as I answered at the Cabinet meeting, yes, certainly that would be, cost would be covered by home-to-school transport, yes, certainly. As regards the second and the third questions, strategic approach to build a new school, I would refer them to councillor Jenkins and his view, quite rightly, on cost estimates. The 60 million pounds that is forecast to build the new school with the highway changes would probably turn into 100 million pounds. And just based on the 60 million would require, capital required of 62.5 million would require borrowing of an extra 33 million pounds, which is just completely infeasible, given the current financial emergency. And as regards busing the children in the short term to these schools in 26, 27, we have no alternative but to follow that approach, because this is what we've been left with by the previous administration.
Thank you. The next question comes from councillor Curstley.
Without the help, thank you, Chairman. So, the question that I want to ask the Cabinet member is very specific, and I do hope that he's going to be able to answer it, because to be perfectly honest with you, if he can't answer it today, then it will mean that all of the things that he's saying have been ill-conceived and not thought through, and will put us in an education emergency. Councillor Boat Green, as he's now known as, has already actually had a go at asking this question in relation to the contribution from the developers in relation to the SWDPR. But I'm astonished at the answer the Cabinet member gave, whether he misunderstood the question. But councillor Boatright-Green, as far as I'm aware, was asking about the Section 106 money that's going to come from the developers, and the Cabinet member stated that it was a paltry 1.2 million. Now, I find that extremely hard to believe, particularly because in my own division, the village of Badsey from one development has had allocated 1 million pound in Section 106. I am also interested to know that the Cabinet member says that schools are happy to expand, because in the case of Badsey, they can't use any of that million pounds because they can't expand for education. And importantly, how much Section 106 money for education is expected to come in, based on the massively increased development that we're seeing across Worcestershire? And what is the plan for actually achieving that massively increased demand on education?
Thank you. Councillor Harman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would the Cabinet member agree with me that it is clearly evident that the Cabinet member and this new administration simply don't have a strategic plan in respect of education place planning, the length and breadth of this county? Following on from councillor Allen's question and an answer, and we did get an answer, that parents wouldn't be paying, home-to-schools transport would be funded for the pupils having to go to Malvern. I'd be interested in what the revenue implications are for funding those children in terms of home-to-school transport. And would he therefore agree with me that by kicking this can down the road, it's simply a sticking plaster? And would he firstly make very clear Reform's policy on a new secondary school for Worcester City? Can the parents and future pupils of a new secondary school expect to see a new secondary school built in Worcester circa 2029, yes or no? And secondly, as a response to councillor May's question, when he said, we've already taken the decision, we're not having a strategic review of education across Worcestershire, could he advise this council since May, A, when that decision was taken, B, at which meeting that decision was taken, and C, who took that decision?
Thank you. Next question comes from councillor Birch.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is a relatively simple one, but I've just, I've been disappointed by the responses we've had so far. Economic investment decisions need to be finance-led, highways improvements decisions to a great degree need to be finance-led, education decisions need to be made on the basis of what is right for children within Worcestershire. Four times I've quoted the Cabinet member, councillor Foster's quoted a financial emergency. If you were to sit in front of a group of parents and their children and tell them they're going to have to commute every day over an hour because of a financial emergency, do you really think that's going to play off with the parents and children within Worcestershire? Now, my question is a simple one. Within Droidwich, we've had it whereby we've had to expand, we've had to repurpose the library, we've had to repurpose other spaces from the school into additional classrooms. Schools aren't just about having classrooms, they are about having those additional spaces whereby children have places they can go after school, before school, time to revise, time to have some quiet time, downtime. With these schools that we're on about expanding here, is the Cabinet member able to assure me that we're not going to lose facilities like libraries, like quiet spaces, like additional learning provision within these schools to make room for additional classrooms?
Thank you. Councillor Foster.
Yes, in relation to the Section 106, councillor misunderstood. The figures I referred to, the 1.2 million is the extra... The figures I referred to, the £1.2 million is the extra money we will get, but since the policy which you will shortly see in the forward plan, that is the increase from the figures that were agreed in 2019. As regards the Section 106 numbers, I can answer very specifically. The capital required of £29.5 million for the expansion of the Worcester City schools, borrowing would be £3.96 million total.
Point of order.
But basically, you need £10.2 million, gap of receipts £10.7, and the Section 106 monies are £4.8 million.
Point of order, please. Inaccurate information. It seems a bit strange that the leader of the opposition has got better financial grasp of the figures for schools than the Cabinet member, but it's not to be surprised, is it? Because the performance today, the actual cost of creating additional permanent places, sorry, the information he's given is incorrect, I want to correct it.
I'm not sure that's point of order.
Well, it is, it's inaccurate information. He's telling the council and all of the residents of Worcestershire a pack of lies.
In your opinion, so...
No, and it's not in my opinion, I have the officer's report in front of me and I can quote the numbers.
I'm sorry, I'm very sympathetic to you, but I'm afraid that's not a point of order. We're going to move on, sorry.
What, sorry, can I just bring that back, Chair? So you're telling me if a Cabinet member gives out figures that are inaccurate in a council meeting...
I think what you're being asked to do is which part of the procedural standing orders are you referring to?
Twenty-one.
Let's have a look.
Is it acceptable to call a Cabinet member a liar?
Well, I'm afraid he's just lied.
So twenty-one relates to councillor's conduct.
Yes, I just told you, it's just basically misleading information. It's the same thing. I can actually, I can prove it now, if you just let me speak for one second.
Hang on, hang on.
So we have to, well, I'm going to refer to twenty-one point two for a start, which is respect for the chair, which we're beginning to lose in the chamber. So the chair, only one person should be speaking, and that should be the chair, when he's trying to sort this out. Twenty-one point three refers to disorderly conduct, twenty-one point four, continuing misconduct by named councillor, twenty-one point five, general disturbance. I'm looking for the bit which says that we're doing a point of order in particular about inaccurate information. I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying we need to point the particular part. I think you've made your point, the chamber's heard it, I think we need to move on.
Thank you very much. councillor Foster, if you'd like to continue.
I would like to continue.
councillor Currie.
Chairman, thank you. I haven't been named apart from the fact that the Cabinet member was answering my question and said the councillor. So if I could perhaps help the situation, the Cabinet member doesn't seem to be answering my question. He said that I misunderstood, but my question was specifically Section 106 money, and that's not what he's answering.
I was answering Section 106 money, and I'll repeat the figure again. The Section 106 money is £4.815 million precisely, and as regards councillor Kent's assertion, assertion that I'm quoting the wrong figures, these are exactly the figures I gave in the Cabinet meeting, I have the same sheet, I have the same sheet of paper. And we can clarify this question very easily, because Adam Johnson is in the room. Can you confirm that my figures are correct, Mr Johnson?
I'm sorry, you may disagree with the answers, but unfortunately councillor Foster has the right to be able to say whatever he likes. He's a politician and he will say what his point of view. You may not like it, whether it's true or not, unfortunately, those are the rules. Unless you've got a specific point of order that actually is in the constitution, I'm afraid I can't allow it. I have to be fair to all sides.
No, no, that was the first, that was the answer to the first question. The section, the first question was Section 106, which I've said is £4.81 million. As regards, as regards the strategic review, could I just remind the previous administration, when they're asking us to provide a strategic review, which we've already made, which we've already decided in four months how to meet the sufficient, how to meet the sufficiency requirements for 26, 27, and 28, 29. They had 20 years, they had 20 years to address these issues. We've had four months to pick up the pieces from their failed administration.
Okay, thank you. We're now...
I've not had an answer to my question about the reuse of classroom space.
The Worcester secondary schools are very happy to expand their capacity, and furthermore, if you look at the falling birth rate despite the developments in the area, the likelihood that a new school would be full beyond 2029 is extremely low. So we will not be building a new school, we do not have the finances to build, we do not have the finances to build...
We'll come back to order, please, thank you. Before we go on any further, I've got a point of order from councillor Amos.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Could you...
Could you please give a ruling? Because a few minutes ago councillor Kendra's leader of the opposition said that a Cabinet member had, quote, "given a pack of lies". He then went on and said that he was a liar. Is that acceptable? And if not, what are you going to do about it?
I actually do have the point of order number now, if that's available. I can evidence that statement.
Okay, I think the Chair's indicating that they want me to speak, so I think there can be a general reminder across the chamber that there should be respect. Generally, the use of liar would not be encouraged to be said in the chamber, so I think hopefully we can draw a line on that. And remember that this is a debating chamber, there will be a fine line. The Chair said at the beginning that there would be a good debate, but it should be done with respect.
Thank you, I think we're going to move on at this point. Thank you. I'm sorry, on this particular one, we're going to have to move on. You may not like the answers you're getting given, but I'm afraid you have to live with it.
Sorry, I wouldn't wish to be discourteous in any way to the chairman. You're quite right, one doesn't always like the answer one's given, but with the grace of respect, Mr Chairman, may I have an answer to my question? I asked when, which, and who.
councillor Foster, would you like to reply to that?
Can you just remind me when, which, and who, what?
Yes, Cabinet member, when councillor May asked you about a strategic review of education across Worcestershire, you said that we'd taken the decision that we would not be having one. So since May, when did you take that decision? In which meeting was it taken, and whom took that decision?
councillor Foster.
We've been advised, we've been advised by the officers, and we're following the officers' advice all along. The figures I quote are the figures given by the officers, and in terms of strategic review, we considered three options, which you're fully aware of, which was to expand the existing schools, to build a new school, or use of County Hall. And we've made, we're still waiting for the feasibility study from County Hall, so we haven't made a final decision, but you will know from the Cabinet meeting that we have all but ruled out the likelihood of building a new school due to the extra borrowing, which would put Worcester County Council into even more further dire financial circumstances.
Point of order, Mr Chair. I have a very serious point of order, if I may. We've had some very serious allegations and counter allegations in council today. I, for one, do not want to intrude into an argument between family members here, especially ones who are estranged from each other. But I do think that that serious allegation does need clarity and confirmation, and I would like to suggest a deferment of 10 minutes, so the Cabinet member can consult the Section 151 officer and confirm the situation to council. That would create clarity and confirmation of the situation and end this kind of nonsensical debate of allegation and counter allegation about who is lying and who is not. So I would like to propose a 10-minute adjournment for that to actually happen.
Another way of dealing with this is we can provide answers in writing to the questions that have been posed. I will let the Chair use their discretion as to whether that is a way forward.
There's been quite a lot of disruption already. The standard of the debate has not been of the highest standard. I think it's only, you know, people will expect to see proper answers to their questions, but I think we have to draw a line at some point. You've received answers, and some of those answers you may not like, but you have to respect the answers that have been given to you by the Cabinet members. Those are the people who are in those positions. You may not like the answers. And we're going to move on to the next set of three questions. Okay, councillor Udall.
Thank you, Chair. Again, it's under the report of the Cabinet, summary decisions taken on the issue regarding secondary schools. I recoiled in horror when the Cabinet member said there's zero chance of a new school being built in St John's or west of Worcester, and I'm already receiving reactions to that comment from the constituents I represent. So just for clarity, he is actually indicating to council and to the residents of St John's today, and I ask him to confirm, that he's actually, by his comments, he's actually confirming that for decades ahead, children in Downs Green may have to travel to Malvern by bus to receive a secondary education. Can he confirm that?
Thank you. Next question will be from councillor Fordington.
I just want to ask a question about parents. I mean, obviously, this can put a lot of stress on the parents, and we need to make sure that the clarity of how they're going to be transporting the children, and also we need to look at their wellbeing. Thank you.
Thank you. And now got councillor Miller.
Yes, thank you, chairman. I've always thought to get a gain out of life, you need to invest in it. And to invest in our children is a very positive way forward for this county. And I feel that the transportation of children over a period of miles and that actually takes away the opportunity for our children to engage with out-of-school normal activities, maybe chess, rugby. Where do we get our sports players from? Where do we get our Olympians from? It's, they're recognised from what they do at school at the very beginning, and they go on, and they can represent this country. Now, if we don't give our children that opportunity, we are not investing in them. We need to make an investment, and has the Cabinet member looked at investing in our children for the future? Not for next year, not for the year after, but for the future. It's an investment that we have to consider, and we should also be supporting.
Thank you. councillor Foster.
Worcester schools, St John's, they won't be transported for decades. No, there is minimal likelihood of a new, of a new school, as I said, because of falling birth rates beyond 2029. But the schools, the expansion of schools in 28, 29 are Worcester secondary schools, they are not, they are not Malvern. Yes, we take into consideration the transporting of children. We have a, we have a financial emergency, we cannot build, we cannot, we cannot spend £100 million, which is what it's likely to be, again, referring to councillor Jenkins's point about, about cost estimates. The figure we've used is, it was, was the original figure of £60.3 million. And yes, I understand the friendship groups, the opportunities to play chess with your friends and so on and so forth. Councillors overlook the fact that we are actually investing £30 million in send, in send expansion for mainstream schools, and we would be, we would be, we would be investing, I've quoted the figures once again, £29.5 million in expanding Worcester secondary schools.
Thank you.
Sorry, my question wasn't answered, about parents, what about the stress levels on parents?
Yeah, I'm very, I'm very sorry, but the Cabinet member has the right to answer or not answer questions according to their right. So unless he chooses to want to clarify that, I'm afraid I'm not going to compel him. councillor Foster, do you... Thank you. Right, we're going to move on to the last, last of the questions.
Can I ask a question? Could I, could I have that in writing, please? Thank you.
councillor McSweeney.
Thank you, Chair. And I wanted to start off also thanking councillor Udall for supporting my residents, because he mentions the west of Worcester expansion, which actually, a lot of the residents are actually in my division of Malvern, linked there to Antunapikularitas. So they have their closest school, is Christopher Whitehead. Also wanted to mention that I have children who take school transport to the Chase, which I think are maybe the only councillor in this chamber who does that currently. So I wanted to thank councillor Miller for his point about the socialisation aspect, that is, that is an important point. Anyway, the point I wanted to make is that transport to schools in Malvern is already strained. I've just literally, a few days ago, raised an issue regarding transport to the Chase from villages north of Malvern. There's a waiting list for the transport from those villages. I've got a parent who's got one child who's on the bus, and the other one has to drive, has to drive the other one and picks up a number of other children along the way who also can't get on the bus. And the road between Worcester and Malvern is already congested, but the busing will just add to congestion. I mean, to come on to my question, I mean, I think councillor Allen already partially asked the question I'm going to ask, but I think it's, I wanted to expand on it a bit. So the parents I represent, they have to pay for transport to the Chase School because it isn't their closest school. So I know, appreciate, this has kind of already been answered, but will we be asking parents and children in Worcester to pay for transport into schools in Malvern when it isn't their closest school? But then the supplementary, so if we're saying they won't have to, so will my residents in villages north of, north of Malvern who are closer than the children who live in Worcester have to pay when the children, when the parents of children in Worcester don't have to pay? Because the current situation is they have to pay. So are we going to put funding in place to cover their costs as well, or are we going to have an unfair situation of those things? The other question is, will, given the current situation, we've got more parents in Worcester end up in the same situation as those in my villages, where they end up on a waiting list to get, get school transport, and they're having to drive their children instead. So again, we've got more congestion. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Wells.
Chairman, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I wonder if councillor Foster might agree to come before either the Children's Panel or OSPB itself, before any further consideration and determination on this, on this matter is provided. So we know where we are right now, but we also know that further work has to be done before any final decisions are made. So I'm seeking reassurance today from the Cabinet member that he will be prepared to come and to either the Children's Panel or OSPB in order that this debate is continued, but perhaps in a more appropriate forum.
Councillor Morehead.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, council. Listen to the debate with with great interest, and I think none of us can get away from the fact that we have got pressure in education and pressure in finance. And that pressure is only going to get greater on education with the government's clear mandate to build more houses. Now, whilst I appreciate that birth rates are decreasing, that doesn't necessarily suggest that no one is going to move into this area with children. So we actually have a genuine issue here. So, yeah, we have to face into this. What I do find interesting, though, is that we keep coming around to this financial emergency. And whilst I appreciate that the figures are different, and there will be a difference here, we're talking about increasing home to school transport costs, and it's been clarified by the cabinet member that the taxpayer will pick this up, not the residents. But that was one of the three areas last year and continue that is a pressure on the council, and was an overspend versus budget. So I find it interesting that we're happy on a revenue line to overspend, but we're not happy to invest in capital investment. What I'm hearing today, that there is no increase to class sizes, there are no new schools, and there is no strategic review. Yet we are a strategic authority. So my question to the cabinet member is a really simple one. What is the strategy for the future of the children of this community of our county? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Foster.
Yeah, in relation to the first question, obviously, I can't answer at this moment in time the discrepancy that there may be between the different districts. So we need to provide, we need to provide a written answer to that. Yes, on the second question, more than very happy to attend whichever children's panel or whichever panels before a final decision is made, and to take councillor Udell's point, and to get complete clarification of the with the officers of the of the figures, which I quoted, which are obviously completely accurate, they're the officers' figures, which I gave in the previous cabinet meeting. And as regards the last question.
Sorry, just before we go into that, can we just have a little bit of clarification on which committee that you'll be coming back to to answer?
Whichever, whichever, whichever scrutiny.
Does it not matter?
Thank you. So can I just clarify, is this scrutiny on the which part of scrutiny feasibility of the site? Because we have already got this going to a scrutiny panel, it is going to corporate and communities. We have our chair councillor James here nodding away, and we have invited the Chair of Children and Family Scrutiny councillor McFay to attend that. So I'm just trying to clarify, otherwise we'll end up with the same issue going to a number of scrutiny committees, which might be rather confusing.
Chairman, can I come back on that? So to take the advice I've just received, I wonder whether we might just, so the commitment is to come to the appropriate panel or committee, which I welcome, and I thank you for that. In terms of the logistics about where and when, is that perhaps something that OSPB could consider as the commissioning body for scrutiny here?
I'm just conscious of entries on the forward plan, and in terms of timescales and decisions needing to be made, and whether or not that would fall in line with the OSPB timetable. And again, just conscious if we're going to have the same issue going to more than one scrutiny committee, you might want to attend the corporate and communities. I think this is probably a discussion to take place outside of this council meeting.
Chairman, thank you. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Great. So sorry, I interrupt you on your third question.
Just a third point. Yes, the the cost of the home school transport is in the low millions. I think it's over, it's one point two million, both for the one point, both for the twenty six, twenty seven, and and twenty twenty eight, twenty nine. They're low numbers. The borrowing required for expanding the Worcester City Schools, as I explained earlier, is three point nine six million pounds. These are all low, low sums of money compared with the alternative of building a new school and the borrowing that that would require.
Thank you. So we're now at the end of the questions on the first item of the of the decisions.
Councillor Jones has just put his hand down.
Councillor Jones.
Okay, thank you. This is a question for councillor Foster. A few people have mentioned here today that we are strategic authority. Is that a new thing? Because the last administration were were in control for years, and we're in an absolute mess. So my question is, if they did have a strategy, can we look at it and make sure we do not make those mistakes that they made?
Councillor Foster.
Yes, absolutely.
Now move on to the second item of questions on, this is on the County Hall. So all those who'd like to speak, please make yourself known. Councillor Hardman.
Yes, thank you very much. I do actually welcome, you know, that we're going to bring County Hall options, because there are a number of options, including the one that councillor Kent alluded to, which is, of course, the obvious one, which is use part of it to build a new school. I do also just advise the the cabinet members, I'm not too sure who's going to make this decision, I often get a bit confused with cabinet members nowadays, is to is to consider our health colleagues, please, because the NHS desperately needs more space, the hospital is too small, they probably would be interested in building nursing accommodation, and I do think there is a chance to do something really imaginative. And if I could just make one more question. We've heard a lot from Reform about the financial emergency, and they do seem to treat the capital programme as though you're adding up the takings from the Masonic raffle. They have to think long term with with capital finance. The bit that I have been very disappointed with, and I am surprised by, of course, is the financial emergency is in the revenue budget, being driven by home to school transport send provision principally. And on that, they appear to be doing nothing.
Clarify what the question was, please.
Well, I mean, there were two questions. One, embrace the NHS and talk to them before you make a decision. The second question was, try and work out that there is revenue, a budget, which is where the financial emergency is, and there is the capital budget, where there is not a financial emergency, because this county is actually underborrowed compared with its peers.
Thank you. Councillor Ocote.
Chair, thank you. Obviously, not having County Hall and with many staff being moved about and people quite often working at home or being moved in, I would just like to ask what the cabinet lead will do around staff, staff welfare and wellbeing, because I feel we're not a cohesive council at the moment. And I think it's really important that we are, particularly with all the changes going forwards. So, yeah, what will be done for staff, staff welfare now we don't have County Hall.
Thank you. Councillor Burt Wright-Green.
Thank you, Chair. We, obviously, I wait for the the report to be created about the disposal of the site, but I have real concerns about the idea that we're giving up what is effectively an incredibly strategic site, right on the edge of Worcester. And I understand the costs involved, and I have read all of the reports. But are we planning to hand over this asset to developers without any caveats on how it's going to be used, bearing in mind that my instant reaction to this is there is income generation potential here, and I'd want to make sure that anything we actually do, we can actually make money out of that, so we can reduce those revenue issues that you are currently discussing.
Thank you. Councillor Watson, please respond.
Thank you. Yeah, with regards councillor Hardman's question about involving the NHS, and probably answers part of your question too, but feasibility study will consider all these options, and it's due to be received at the end of this month. It will come to scrutiny committee on twentieth of October prior to going to cabinet, so you will have all the considerations and answers at that point. With regards the difference in capital and revenue, I'm a qualified accountant of twenty five years, I absolutely understand the difference in capital and revenue. All capital expenditure that's funded by borrowing has a revenue implication. And just so everyone in this room is absolutely clear of the financial legacy that we were left with. Two years ago, the Rainy Day Fund or the Risk Reserve of this council was forty five million pounds. On the back of the last two or three Conservative budgets, at the end of this financial year, it's projected to be thirteen million pounds. They have burnt through thirty two million pounds of reserves because they didn't have the guts to make the difficult decisions to balance the budgets in those years. So don't be coming to us and saying that we're making up a financial emergency. That is the fact. That is a fact. And councillor Kent, you want to talk about facts. Those figures are factual. And going on to the the final question, this council is an exceptional financial support. That has to be repaid. We need capital receipts to repay. I've heard all the arguments and all the discussions about investing in the future of our children. Absolutely get that, and I don't think anyone would disagree with that. But we are in a financial emergency, and financial emergencies involve and require financial, sorry, emergency, emergency decisions, to put them right.
Councillor Allen.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Good morning to you, councillor. I just want to check, and I'm sure the answer is yes, but I want to be certain that any decision that the cabinet makes regarding this disposal of County Hall and its land will actually come to full council for a vote.
Okay, next question is from councillor Kent.
Two questions, please. The first one is, if you decided to dispose of County Hall for a capital receipt, obviously with the planning situation and local government reorganisation, well, whether it's going to happen after Labour's sacked the entire team that were organising it, we don't know. But when would you envisage actually receiving any money from the sale of that site, in terms of, most of these sites are subject to planning? The other side is, I'm a little confused, actually, because I'm looking at the first report, and now I'm looking at the second report, which seems to be indicating all the way through that we're still considering using this site for secondary education, albeit I will quote the word partial use. So I'd like some clarification of that, and particularly because I think on multiple occasions, the cabinet member for education actually said, we weren't going to be building a secondary school. So which part of these reports is actually correct? Have they been put together in the wrong way or in the wrong words? But could you clarify that for me? So the question is, just to summarise, when would you envisage, subject to planning, actually receiving it, and which council would receive it, because it probably certainly wouldn't be this one, and how is that going to affect the short term issues in terms of capital? And the other thing is, is that clarification, are we still looking at it, or has it been actually cancelled and we're not going to build a school under any circumstances?
Thank you. Councillor Watson.
Thank you. Sorry, councillor, I forgot, I didn't pick your name up, I do apologise. But yes is the answer. If it needs to come back to a full council decision, absolutely it will do.
That was an if. If it needs. So for, in terms of the sale of County Hall, it is going to scrutiny, and it's also going to be an executive decision of cabinet.
Right, okay.
If you'd like to continue the rest of your answer, that'd be great.
Again, respect to councillor Kent, the estimated receipt will be coming in twenty twenty seven, so it is two years ago, but still prior to local reorganisation. And, yeah, the second point was that the feasibility has been put in place, the feasibility has been put in place to review the possibility of having some sort of temporary, small scale educational requirements on the county, not to build the full school.
Thank you. Councillor May.
Thank you very much, and thank you for answering the questions to the cabinet member for finance. My question is then, are we selling this land or looking at disposing of this land with planning permission? Because with planning permission, it will be a more asset and attain a higher value. I cannot comprehend that a site of this size will be ready to go onto the market with full planning permission by twenty twenty seven. Could you comment on that, please?
Okay, so that's a set of three questions, isn't there? No, there's a new, I think we're on a new set of questions, aren't we? So councillor Udell.
Thank you. The report touches on my concern briefly, it is about the future of the countryside centre in Worcester Woods Country Park. Obviously, that is part of the County Hall estate, especially running directly up to the boundary. Can you confirm that any future plans will protect the integrity of Worcester Woods and allow it to continue to be a free to access source of countryside for the residents of the county to be able to continue to freely use? And the integrity of Worcester Woods will be protected at all costs?
Thank you. Councillor Watson.
Thank you. Yeah, councillor May first, yeah, obviously, the site with planning permission obviously carries more value, but this is the whole point of the feasibility study, to find out what the best options are. So it's not something I can answer now, because it's dependent on what the feasibility comes. The feasibility study may come back and say, if you want to sell it quick, you'd have to go five million pounds. If you want to sell it for fifteen million pounds, you're going to have to get planning permission. This is the whole point of the feasibility study, so I can't really answer, you're right in what you're saying, of course, it carries more value with planning permission, but that may be what, maybe not what the feasibility study says when it comes out.
May I just come back, Chairman, please? Thank you very much, and thank you for that answer. The point you made was that you said we'd have a capital receipt by twenty twenty seven. I just want to measure what's going down the line and being webcast to our residents. The likelihood is that if you have a capital receipt in twenty twenty seven, you are already selling it at a rock bottom price to attain that capital receipt. To get full planning permission and to go through the process, and believe me, at the moment, I've got two of these on the line, and I'm dealing with it, has taken in excess of eighteen months, with consultancy processes and frameworks you have to use. And I just want you to be fair to that resident that down the line, and to be honest, to say, actually, it will be beyond twenty twenty seven. With local government reorganisation and everything else that's going on, there is not any real chances, the councillor, of having a capital receipt by twenty twenty seven. Thank you.
Twenty twenty seven is over twenty four months away. It doesn't necessarily have to be January the first, twenty twenty seven. Okay, September twenty twenty seven is twenty four months away. December twenty twenty seven is twenty seven months away.
Sorry, I'm going to have to come back here, ahead of vesting day, which is twenty twenty seven, which is what we're told, and the shadow authority, there will be restrictions placed on any assets that can be sold in the next twelve months. You will not be able to sell that and get a capital receipt ahead of a new local authority on whatever platform being established. And I just want, honestly, thank you.
Councillor May, sorry, you've made your point twice now, I think you've made it. Councillor Watson, if you'd like to apply, you may, otherwise we'll move on to the rest of the questions.
So I'll respond to councillor Udell's point now. Again, I don't want to keep coming back to this, but this is the whole point of the feasibility study for the whole site, so what's to be protected, what's to be sold, what's to be kept. So I can't commit to anything at the moment, until we've seen that feasibility study, which isn't due back until the end of this month.
Thank you. Now we've got, I'm going to ask a question from councillor Kezey.
Thank you, Chairman. The cabinet member has said that he can't commit to, and he's waiting for the feasibility study. So on what basis, aside from anything to do with local government reorganisation, so park that for a moment, on what basis are you expecting to be in receipt of those monies by twenty twenty seven?
On the basis that was in the timeline in the report when it came to cabinet back in July.
And what is that basis?
It's the officers' advice on when it can be marketed and sold with or without planning permission. It's clearly in the in the report that went to cabinet back in July.
Thank you. Next question is from councillor Josh Robinson.
Thank you. And just a little bit of, just a little bit of clarity, and as you say, you're waiting for the feasibility study. you say, you're waiting for the feasibility study, but also we're looking for the best value for council taxpayers' money. You said that feasibility study could say a quick fire sale would be £5 million, and that we might wait, and it could say £50 million. Although they're theoretical numbers, but can you assure this, this chamber that you won't be looking to fire sale the, the site, and ensuring that the best value for council taxpayer is always at the heart of what you decide?
And that is councillor Roger Bennett.
Yes, can I ask the cabinet member, who actually and when did this feasibility study start, and who set the terms of reverence for it?
Thank you. councillor Watson.
Thank you. To take the first question, absolutely, this administration will, will seek to safeguard the value for money for taxpayers. The figures I quoted were just plucked out of the air, that don't bear any resemblance to reality. But yes, absolutely, this, this administration will always look to protect the interests of the taxpayer. Councillor Bennett, yes, the, the process for the sale of this site was actually started under the previous administration. And I understand, as I understand, and I'll stand to be corrected by councillor Kent, he was fully supportive of the sale of the site when it, when it was initiated.
Thank you. So we've come to the end of the set of questions on County Hall. The third item for questions is Worcestershire's electric charge point delivery. Who would like to ask questions on this? Councillor Cross.
Thank you Chair. Just wanted to inquire about this, whether our county council permits on-street charging for properties that do not have driveways, for example, terraced housing, whether there's been any change in, in policy or practice or permission, because use of cable channels etc. What our stance is, please.
Thank you. And I've also got councillor Hardman.
Thank you very much, chairman. Yes, I mean, generally, of course, I welcome this, this charge point delivery programme. I do think that we are going to need to roll out more of these charging points. But I'd just like to remind the cabinet member for transport, the Chinese who are the leaders in this field, of course, are doing an entirely different strategy to the one that the Labour Government is currently endorsing, because they are going for changing the battery, rather than delivering charging points across the head of their network. I mean, that makes sense, and would deal with councillor Cross's question over whether, where you have density of housing, it's perfectly easy for middle-class people normally to charge their vehicles on their driveway. The problem comes when you go into blocks of flats and places like that, where the charging points are less. And I think it's correct that we deliver that. But I think the council ought to be mindful that this strategy will probably change within five years.
Thank you. I've now got councillor Josh Robinson.
Thank you again. And whilst I welcome this, and you know, it's always good to get money from third-party partners to maximise the infrastructure that we can improve in Worcestershire. Can I just ask the cabinet member whether there are any plans in the future to use Worcestershire council taxpayers' money to extend this?
Thank you. I'm now going to call on councillor Perks to answer those three questions. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Cross, the usage of charging points across pavements is used entirely at the user's risk. The council accepts no liability for that. And that's, that's the position that we have. Councillor Hardman, I do take your point on entirely. And I think where we're in a position where we were to adopt the Chinese operation, it would be much more succinct, and it would allow us to move more efficiently into the adoption of EVs. That being said, this, the plan under the levy scheme, it is in place at the moment. It's only for usage on county council adopted land. So at the moment, for any development where the land is not adopted, this scheme would not be permissible. And councillor Robinson, no, there is no plan at the moment to use any taxpayers' funding for this. Thank you.
Thank you. I've now got a question from councillor Miller.
Yes, thank you chairman. Yes, can I have some assurance that the infrastructure will support the actual charging facilities that we, that we're looking at? Because the one at Longbridge, which I think I've said before, this charging facility at Longbridge, the old British Leyland Works, is actually charging from diesel engines to charging electric vehicles, because the infrastructure just isn't there. Now, do we have some assurance that the infrastructure will support any such project going forward? And at a cost that the users of those vehicles can relate to in whether it is financially more viable to run electric or diesel or petrol?
Thank you. councillor Perks. Just the one question.
Thank you Chair. Thank you councillor Miller. With regards to the infrastructure for the scheme that's being looked into, there's grid connection. But past that, I'm unsure on how to answer your question. There is a public survey out at the moment, which is requesting information from across the county as to where residents would like these points to be held. At the moment, we've had really good feedback. The survey is open still, so that can be added to. With regards to the financial feasibility of said points, I think that's rather subjective and a somewhat difficult one to answer. If you're able to charge, then the option will be there for you. If not, then there will be other options. It's a subjective answer, then question. Thank you.
Councillor James.
Fab, thank you. Just a really quick one on the survey. I know I've seen it on social media, but is there more that the county are doing to promote that? I know a lot of my residents aren't necessarily digitally literate. Are we going to have some sort of pop-up in communal spaces? I think it's important that we get that. I know, for a person, I know electric vehicles are quite divisive, in the sense that, you know, people from lower incomes tend not to be able to afford electric vehicles. But I want to make sure that everyone from the spectrum of economic background will be able to input into the future.
Thank you councillor James. I will come back to you on all of the ways that we are getting the marketing out. But I absolutely pick your point, so thank you.
Thank you. councillor Allen.
Yes, thank you Chair. Good morning Carl. Just want to check a couple of facts. I believe the, these charging units are to go purely on county council land. And if that's correct, where does that leave places, towns such as Upton, where I cannot think anywhere it could currently go? Once we have a unitary authority, of course, it will change. But in the meantime, how does that help my residents of Upton? And the other thing, who will collect the revenue? Will it be the county council? Or will it be a for, for operator who will collect and keep all the funds? Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Perks.
Thank you councillor Allen, and good morning. With regards to the county council land, that is something that has been discussed with the officers. At the moment, there is no movement on that. So unfortunately, if it is the case that there is little to no county council land within your area, they would not benefit, as things stand. With regards to the collection of funds, I will need to come back to you on what the share is.
Sorry, did you answer the question from councillor James? You did, fine. Seen your moment there for a second. Thank you. It's getting quite late, isn't it? We will be having a break in a moment. Councillor Hardman, you did indicate, but you have actually already asked a question. So I'm tending towards, we are getting towards needing a break, and it's getting quite late. So if you want to make a very brief one, but this is the last one.
Thank you very much, chairman. I mean, it's on the behalf of Breeden Parish Council, because clearly I've been lying to them, because I told them the levy capital fund, they will be able to access it, because the three car parks in Breeden are owned by the parish council. There is no county council land that I can think of that would be suitable to put a charging place on. So can I advise the cabinet member that he needs to find a way of delegating this funding down to parish councils, and possibly even if he was feeling really reckless, authorities like Bromsgrove District Council, who do have land? Because I, well, I mean, I suppose in the middle of Perthville is about the only place I can think of where this scheme is going to apply to. So I mean, otherwise, he's going to fail. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. councillor Perks.
Thank you councillor Hardman. With regards to can the funding be delegated, as I say, it's something that I've asked already. I will go away and ask the officers again. As far as adoption across the county is concerned, the current remit is for county council land only. But as per councillor Allen's question, I will go away. I will ask the question and I'll feedback.
Great, thank you. Right, I think we've come to perhaps a natural break now, where we'll have a short comfort break, 10 minutes. Okay, so back in.
Thank you councillor chairman, I second the motion and reserve my right to speak later in the debate.
Okay, thank you everybody. Now, please turn to pages seven to 10, this is notices of motion. Four notices of motion have been received. Members are reminded that a maximum of 90 minutes will be set aside for all discussions of notice of motion, and I would therefore ask that any points made are brief and concise. Should an amendment to a motion be moved, the allocated time set aside for motions will be paused until the hard copy of the amendment has been circulated around the council chamber and the mover has read out the amendment. I'm now going to invite the signatories of the first motion of the healthcare parking permit scheme to move their motion. Councillor Melorkom.
Chair, thank you. This motion is about fairness, safety and common sense. The case of the motion, for a long time colleagues in this chamber will know that community nurses and healthcare workers have been facing an impossible choice, risk a fine for parking near a patient's home or walk streets away carrying heavy equipment, sometimes in response to a 999 call, sometimes at night, sometimes to someone at the end of their life. This is happening here in Worcestershire and it is simply not acceptable. A petition has been gathered and over 440 signatures from residents and healthcare staff. Staff are enclosed, and the words, the words are really powerful, I've got some examples here, I've got one, it's, "I'm a community nurse and every fine I have received was for being safely parked in a permit space while visiting a patient. We should not have to pay fines for carrying out fundamental care." Another example, "I work in the out of hours team, I often have to walk the streets at night carrying medical equipment, I'd be horrified if a family member had to do this, but this is my job." And one other example, "My sister is a community nurse and pregnant, she's walking further and further from patients' homes, this is a question of safety as well as care." And these are not hypotheticals, these are real healthcare workers in our communities. So we are not asking for the impossible. Other councils, Oxfordshire, Cornwall, Bradford, have schemes in place. The city council, Worcester City, has confirmed the system already exists to deliver one here, all that is needed is county council approval. Thinking about fairness and impact, this is not about special treatment, it is about making sure nurses and carers and healthcare workers can spend their time wherever it matters with patients. Every minute wasted looking for parking, every pound spent on fines is time and energy taken away from care. So chair colleagues, this is about removing barriers to care, not creating them, it is about showing that Worcestershire will not be the county that punishes healthcare staff for doing their jobs, and I urge members across the chamber to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, and councillor Dan Boatright-Green to second.
Thank you chair, I second the motion and reserve my right to speak later in the debate.
Thank you. So I'm now going to ask, does the council wish this to be discussed today? Agreed, thank you. So I'm going to open up for debate, who would like to ask a question or put a point forward? Councillor Yudle.
Yeah, thank you chair, I do support this motion, but I do have some concerns especially about the wording which is enclosed within it. In 2014, I worked with the late councillor Andy Roberts, just proven I can work across the aisle, and introduced a scheme with him for NHS workers in Worcester City. It went a bit further than just residence parking schemes and car parks, it included all traffic regulation orders and then allowed National Health Service staff to have the similar parking rights as a disabled blue badge holder, but for a maximum of one hour. It had zero take-up, not one permit was issued. It's essentially a district council issue, as they are responsible for parking enforcement. I don't believe necessarily that this motion is needed, especially when we don't need to reinvent the wheel, especially when a system has already been devised. It surely needs to be brought up to date and to be expanded countywide. I hope by supporting this motion, we will enable that to happen.
Thank you. The next person will be councillor Amos for Reform Group, you get five minutes.
Yes, thank you mister chairman, on behalf of the Reform UK group, I would be happy in principle to support this motion. We all know how dedicated nurses are to their jobs and patients. My sister is a nurse and my sister-in-law was a nurse, and I know how freely they give of their time and what tremendous commitment they show to others. So yes, let us play our part as county councillors to make the job of our nurses and healthcare staff a bit easier and more hassle-free. However, we do need to provide a scheme that has been properly thought out, will be properly implemented, is easily enforceable and quite simply works as it is intended. And there are a number of criteria which need to be taken into account to achieve this, I list just some of them. First of all, the need for thorough consultation with all healthcare providers, remembering that many will be private companies and agency staff, not just NHS employees. Secondly, detailed consultation with the district, city and borough councils, who are the enforcers of any such scheme. We all know that there has been significant abuse with the orange-blue badge schemes, and in this case there will be an added layer of possible abuse, because it is not just about using a parking space as now, but also the purpose of the visit in the first place. Clearly, we can't have a situation where people attempt it to park up, for example, to do a little bit of shopping instead of attending to their medical duties, so how will this be identified? Third question is, we also need to remember that current resident parking permit schemes do not guarantee a parking place, but merely provide a right to use one if one is available. And as residents have to pay for that use, I'm quite sure they will want to generously guard their rights. Number four, the lower tier authorities responsible for enforcement have never had one uniform or coordinator system, so discussions must be held with them to iron that out. And number five, the motion is expecting county council officers to come up with proposals for a healthcare scheme, but we need to recognise that their expertise covers residence parking permit schemes, not pay and display zones, which again are varied throughout the county. Number six, the motion quite rightly looks to ensure that only verified healthcare workers can participate, so somebody will have to decide who should be included, and we will need to decide whether that will be the county council or the providers or somebody else. But the point is, the wider the boundaries are drawn, the greater will be the practical problem of capacity and enforcement. The penultimate point is, the motion correctly says that there should be no financial cost on the county council, quite rightly, as there is no budget for this proposal and there won't be in the future. The motion also stipulates that healthcare providers should meet all the costs, so that will have to be an upfront financial commitment from them. It will involve a considerable amount of work by officers to set the level of fees, and this must be recharged to the providers. Whether these costs are then passed on by the employers to the staff or to the patients will be a matter for the providers, but I'm quite sure everybody in this chamber would agree that these charges should not be passed on to the patients, any more than they're charged at the moment. But remember, the county council cannot of course control that particular matter. So mister chairman, we need to accept that there are complex and time-consuming issues, given the involvement of myriad healthcare providers, parking locations, stakeholders as well as councils, and the need to consult them all properly and thoroughly. We need a proper system that functions smoothly from day one, not one that adds to existing systems which are already at or near capacity. The motion rightly refers to setting up a scheme, quote, "as soon as practicable", end quote. Getting assessments, costings, eligibility criteria in place will not be quick or simple, but of course it can be done. I do understand that there may already be one or more healthcare schemes in place around the county at the moment. I understand one was introduced possibly about 10 years ago in Worcester City, but was never taken up simply because there was no demand for it. Obviously, chair, the final point is this, officers will look into these schemes, whether they're up and running or they're in embryo, around the county, because I'm sure they will be able to learn something from it. But let's treat this motion positively, with enthusiasm, let's see how we can set up a scheme and then make a final decision at that point. So I would happily support this motion, chair.
Thank you. Next one, next person is councillor Hart.
Thank you mister chairman, I speak on behalf of the Conservative Group, and I find myself agreeing with councillor Alan Amos in his, in its entirety, mind you, that's probably not surprising, as we're both centre-right conservatives at heart, and he speaks with eloquence, authority and persuasiveness, but of course he's had lots of experience in his role as cabinet member for highways as part of a conservative administration for many years. But notwithstanding that, I do and speak, as I say, on behalf of the Conservative Group, have considerable sympathy for this notice of motion, and we absolutely will support it. But councillor Amos quite rightly points out the proper caveats, because this scheme will need to be properly thought out. I would venture to say, as opposed to notice of motion, scrutiny may wish to look at any potential policy, and no doubt it will have to be an executive decision in terms of the actual implementation of any policy, but the statutory officers will advise, because of course we are debating it and council as a whole can and does set policy in respect of some matters. I totally agree with him as well also about how widely the scheme is drafted, but I noted with interest that this specifically references healthcare professionals, and of course there will be lots of professionals undertaking social care when they undertake domiciliary roles to keep people in their own home as opposed to having to be going into either a care or nursing home. And I do just question, and perhaps the mover when they sum up could clarify, whether they are thinking about social care professionals as well or not. And there is in the notice of motion perhaps a lack of evidence to substantiate some of the assertions, but notwithstanding that, we do accept the wider sentiment. And I noted that in terms of any freedom of information request, confirm that no formal records, assessments or minutes exist to justify the county council's previous decision not to pursue a scheme, but I guess in order not to pursue a scheme, there has to be a request for one to be made in the first place, and I don't recollect certainly from the 16 years that I was in the administration, that we were ever formally requested to implement such a scheme in terms of council policy, but I just make that point for the sake of completeness. But yes, the Conservative Group does have sympathy for the notice of motion, and subject to all of the caveats that councillor Amos suggests, it seems entirely sensible.
Thank you, councillor Perks.
Thank you chair. Whilst I understand the intentions behind this motion and the desire to support carers operating across our communities, I'm not currently able to support motion one in its present form, and I'll explain why. At first glance, this may appear a sensible and compassionate proposal, but we must remember that the issuing of parking permits, and more importantly, parking enforcement, is not managed by the county council. It's firmly within the remit of district councils. There have been ad hoc arrangements made by the district councils, of which Worcester City has been named today, to manage such requests as they have the knowledge and experience of any difficulties faced by the health and social care visitors to the areas they enforce. I'm mindful that many of the organisations involved in care provision are private companies, not just NHS bodies or within Worcester County Council. That raises important questions about how the scheme would be administered and funded. Private firms are expected to pay, and if so, at what rate and by what mechanism. More importantly, who will advise those same individuals receiving care of the cost increases that will arise as the result of this motion? These are not trivial questions, especially in light of the current pressures on our budgets and staffing levels and the wider cost of living crisis happening across this county and country at large. This policy proposal or change to permitting would need to be fully scoped, not just for operational feasibility, but for financial and legal implications as well. Districts have an appeals mechanism in place for carers who receive parking penalties whilst carrying out their duties on top of expense claims process within Worcester County Council and the NHS. Given that our own teams are at capacity and being stretched further, I am concerned about the expectation that the county council would take on a role it is neither resourced for or best placed to deliver. For those reasons, governance, cost, duplication of roles and a lack of clear operational detail, I cannot support the motion in its current form. And that's each of you to consider this in your vote today. And that's each of you to consider this in your vote today.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor.
Good morning, Chair. So I speak today with deep respect and admiration for the nurses, doctors and healthcare workers who serve our communities with unwavering dedication. Their commitment day and night, weekends and holidays, and even on Christmas morning, show their dedication to keep us well and cared for, usually at low points in our lives. We owe them more than gratitude, we owe them action. It is both astounding and unacceptable that in parts of the UK, including Worcestershire, NHS staff are still being charged to park at the very hospitals where they save lives. These charges are not just unfair, they are a contradiction of the values we claim to uphold. I strongly believe that healthcare workers should never have to pay for parking at their place of work. Their employers should fully cover these costs as a matter of principle and respect to the essential services they provide. However, I'm concerned that if parking management is left to private operators, the financial burden could be shifted on to patients, an acceptable outcome that undermines integrity of public healthcare. We must remain vigilant against profit-driven practices that erode the value of public service. In the same vein, I worry that the NHS may resist absorbing these costs, citing budgetary constraints or income generation policies. That too deserves open and honest debate. Supporting our healthcare workers shouldn't come second to financial targets. I speak not only for myself, but I believe for many across the chamber and our community. The report reference must be conducted thoroughly and returned to this council for further debate. Let us ensure that this issue remains on the agenda until meaningful change can be achieved. With that said, I will support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hart.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. I'm just reflecting on councillor Taylor's contribution, because I don't think this is a question of parking at the hospital, this is a question of parking when people are out doing home care visits. And I do think there's a bit of totality going on between the way this notice of motion is constructed, because in one section, it is going on about NHS professionals, and as the Cabinet Member for Transport alluded to, in my view, it goes on then about healthcare providers and stakeholders. So I wanted to be sure that this was going to also include adult social care, the delivery of adult social care. I do also think that very much this is a Worcester City issue. I find it hard to think of anywhere in Wychaven where this would, but presumably, the idea is, I seem to think my GP has a green card these sticks in his windscreen on occasions that says GP on call, and it would sort of work in that sort of way. I also wondered, because of the lack of parking there is in the arboretum, I did go there once, you know, as to whether it would allow them to park on double yellow lines, and they would be exempt from normal traffic procedures. It's a very complex subject.
Thank you. Next, councillor Birch.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, as councillor Hart has alluded to, I see no issue in opposing this motion. I think ultimately, it's a district council issue, and one that the district councils can hopefully take away in Worcester City, especially as councillor Hartman points out, Wychaven is not really a persistent issue we have with so few resident parking schemes in place. But to me, the main issue that's being quoted here is around the need for people to walk and travel a long distance with medical equipment, et cetera, and the need for being able to park closely. So I think it's an opportunity for the county to lead by example, and hopefully encourage our district councils to perhaps have a discretionary policy when it comes to parking enforcement around this issue.
Thank you. Catherine Moorhead.
Thank you, Chair. I struggled really with this one, when I started to read it, about which way I would go with this. Because in principle, I'm fully supportive of the intent here, for a key group of service providers across the population. And whilst I certainly won't repeat all of the points that have been raised by members across different political parties, because I think there is a lot to be worked through to ensure that this is a fair and considered scheme that comes through. So I think the insurances that I would want from the proposers, specifically when it comes round to the council resolves to, instruct officers to urgently develop proposals for a countywide permit scheme, I would want reassurances that the proposers will have listened to, and will consider the points being made across the chamber today. And then further down, bring forward a report in six months outlining a delivery plan, that we would have the opportunity to scrutinise that for absolute clarity and fairness across all workers. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other... Oh, councillor Allen.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I will be supporting this motion, though I have to say, I'm slightly confused by it. My biggest confusion is, who actually is going to be able to apply for it? It says healthcare professionals, and what do you call a healthcare professional? Many elderly people have somebody come to look at their feet on a fairly regular basis. There are private physiotherapists who go into people's homes to attend to them, because they can't wait, or they can't get a physiotherapist. So I think it needs an awful lot of work, it would have been helpful if the motion was a bit more clearer to me, and would give an indication of the numbers of users, what's the pick-up rate, you know, is it going to be 1,000, is it going to be 10,000? And I will support it, but it does need to come back in front of us, and it needs proper scrutiny first. Thank you.
Thank you. I've seen other speakers' contributions, so I'm going to ask the proposer to sum up. Would you like to speak? Thank you.
I've reserved my right, so I'll use it. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone for their support, and can I just welcome the love we see between our centre-right colleagues? It's good to see the healing begin. I would just like to say that in terms of why we've set this motion out this way, is that we can then put a report together that then gives us the opportunity to define and to clarify. If we came to a very specific set of groups of people, we knew full well that other people's lived experience would then result in us having conversations about changes that needed to happen. So it made sense that we brought something to the table where we could collaborate, we could work together, and we could make sure that we got the right answers. And I do agree that district councils do administer the finding side of things, but there are roads and there are traffic orders, and so we're actually adding to the cost of living crisis of our healthcare workers. And I don't think we should ever be using the appeals process as a way to hope for leniency, because I know full well that that's not always the case. I agree, parking charges in hospitals are wrong, but I would say that this is not something that we will be covering, because it's not land that we own. The system does need to be across county, because we have a lot of members of staff who will start in Pershore, move up to Worcester, also move across to Worcester, and finish their day in Kidderminster. And it is a shame that the city did have a policy and it wasn't taken up. I do wonder though, whether it was a lack of demand, or whether people actually knew, because I do have to thank the Worcester City council officers and healthcare providers for working with us on this motion. It's been an incredibly interesting, but also kind of deeply rewarding experience, going through all of the different frustrations that they have. Just on the topic of the lack of evidence, this is the longest motion I've ever been convinced to bring to council, and I'm still quite uncomfortable with how long it is. There is a huge evidence base behind it, if you'd like to read it, I do have it sat on my computer. And I do understand the financial challenges we're facing, I appreciate we need to make it cost neutral, I accept all of the caveats that people have brought to the table today. I just really hope that we're able to bring this forward and actually come up with a solution. Thank you.
I'm going to ask the mover to sum up, and then we'll go to the vote.
Chair, thank you, and councillor, thank you for taking the time and your considered responses on this, it is important, and I think as a county, we have the ability to pull this together, and with our work in partnership with the districts and the NHS, et cetera, that we can bring something and make this work. If we try to do it from a city or district level up, it's not going to work. Even in Worcester, we have small areas where a street is split, Part Worcester, Part Wychaven. So I'd like to thank you all for that, and I'd like to clarify, it does include social workers as well, so apologies if that was not clear in the motion, they are key to this too, and very relevant to the county council. So yeah, just again to say thank you, it's been quite a stressful morning, but thank you for your support with this as much as you're able, and I'm sure we will bring out more clarification and more detail around this, and make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the votes, I remind you to use your yellow card, put it up high so you can count your vote. All those in favour? All those against? Any abstentions? Two? Okay. Thank you, that motion is carried, thank you. Okay. So the next, well, the next motion is on local government reorganisation, and it's going to be proposed by councillor Sam Evans.
Thank you, Chairman. The previous administration bid for a single unitary council to cover the whole of Worcestershire, they did this without even a single vote taking place at full council. Since then, we have seen a significant change in councillors, with many of us becoming county councillors for the first time. This motion allows this new look Worcestershire County Council to decide together whether we would support proposals for a North and South Worcestershire Unitary Councils instead. Like a lot of people, I got into politics to make a difference in my local community. I, and many residents I speak to, are concerned that one super council for the whole of Worcestershire will lose the local part of local government. Being community-centred is exactly what differentiates us from central government. Worcestershire is a diverse county with different needs in different areas. It's vital we have councillors rooted in their communities, that understand their local area, are accessible to residents, and make decisions locally about local issues. Local Government Boundary Commission modelling suggests 100 councillors for the whole of Worcestershire under the One Worcestershire model. That's one councillor for every 6,000 residents. This huge number risks a democratic deficit, with residents being less able to access their councillors. Whereas, North Worcestershire would have 63 councillors, and South 70 respectively. A North and South model would be closer to democratic norms, and more likely to make better decisions, as residents would be able to have closer links with their councillors. The best decisions are those made by people who understand the local area and issues at hand. Would it be effective for councillors on the border of the Cotswolds to be making decisions by areas in the north of the county, say in villages such as Finnsal or Blackwell? Or would smaller unitary councils, where councillors are more connected to their communities around them, make better decisions? For example, take BREP, the Bromsgrove Root Enhancement Programme. It's been a disaster and fails to tackle the issues Bromsgrove faces. It's unwanted by residents, and a poor use of taxpayers' money. BREP is the prime example of decisions being made by those without the on-the-ground experience in their local area. I'm sure many of you can think of similar examples in your own divisions too. When it comes to North and South unitaries being better than one, don't just take my word for it. The SHAPE Worcestershire survey shows that the public back North and South unitaries, with only 29% backing One Worcestershire. Residents have spoken, and this council should listen. Indeed, there are flaws of a North and South model, but not all systems are perfect. Some arguments I've encountered in favour of One Worcestershire are that it is more efficient financially to have a single large authority. Perhaps, but I don't think it's as simple as that. Why should we compromise local democracy to save some cash? The mutual ventures study commissioned by five of our councils shows us actually a possibility for diseconomies of scale with a larger unitary council if it's too big. And before we move to the debate, please let me just dispel a bit of false information that's been spread about this, namely that Bromsgrove will become part of Birmingham if we adopt the North and South model. No, Bromsgrove will not become part of Birmingham. Birmingham is already the largest local authority in Western Europe, and doesn't need to get any bigger. It is quite clear that the boundaries of a North Worcestershire council include Bromsgrove, Redditch and Wireforest, not Birmingham. Chairman, we've seen this month cross-party support for North and South Worcestershire Unitary Councils from five of our councils. It would be great to see the same unity here across party lines, and I look forward to the debate. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going now to ask for the seconded, Dan Boatright.
Thank you, Chair. I second the motion, and I reserve my right to speak at the end of the debate.
Thank you. So I'm now going to ask councillor, will we consider this today? Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm now going to ask people to speak, I've got councillor McBain.
Thank you, Chair. Although I'm technically speaking on behalf of the group, as we're not whipped, I want to make it clear that these are my personal views, but hopefully, some of you may share them, and in fact, Sam has already articulated some of them. So what's clear to me is that the further we've gone through this process, the more shambolic it's become. To put it bluntly, government have been and continue to be a complete shower. Moving the goalposts on population figures, recent revelations about unchecked costings, meaning that there's a higher likelihood that rather than saving money, unitary councils will be spending money, and local Labour council leaders being called into a meeting just a couple of weeks ago to be informed about the potential splitting of existing district councils. As if that wasn't chaotic enough, this week, the main architects of LGR have gone. Angela Rayner has resigned under a cloud, and Jim McMahon was sacked. What a confusing mess and diabolical centralised power grab masquerading as devolution this is, seemingly at any cost. Of course, what government should do is pull the plug on this poorly thought-out plan, so that councils like ours can get on with their day-to-day business, rather than being consumed by this damaging daily distraction. But they're not going to risk further humiliation by making yet another U-turn. I would actually go further than the recommendation in this notice of motion, and request that as a council, we write to government, as other councils have done, and request that the whole thing should be cancelled. As you can probably tell, I have so little trust and respect for the current government, that I have to do what I can to protect the interests of residents, and the only way I can think of doing that at the moment is to make sure that the political decision-making process is as close to them as it possibly can be. Therefore, it won't surprise you to know that I am in support of this notice of motion, for this council to recommend the two-unitary option, and I hope that it will receive cross-party support, sorry. After all, this will impact on families, communities and country, and communities have spoken, with 48% backing creating a North and South unitary, 29% supporting one unitary, and 19% not supporting local government reorganisation at all, that's the result of the SHAPE survey. Although this is the first debate we have had on this issue at full council, as has already been explained, the recommendation for the single unitary was made by the cabinet of the former administration. The district councils have had extraordinary council meetings, and the public have spoken. So surely, as a council here, we need to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kent.
Thank you, councillor, and I speak on behalf of the group, and it's quite true, I just want to actually read the motion out, because I think the proposer got a little bit confused about what they'd actually put forward to council, which is, following the outcome of the election in which the Conservatives lost their majority fighting on a platform of one unitary authority for the whole of Worcestershire, this county council resolves two. Well, I think that's a bit disingenuous, I don't know whether anybody else agrees with me, but I think I was pretty unique amongst my colleagues in standing on a One Worcestershire ticket. It was part driven for me, for the implications of my division being on the Birmingham border, and interestingly, from what the proposer said, the call from the Labour MP for Redditch, Chris Law, for closer ties with Birmingham under the local government reorganisations being proposed by this inept Labour government. And when I stood in May, representing withall, I stood openly and proudly on a One Worcestershire platform. Residents gave me one of the largest majorities in the county, with more than 1,800 votes in a single division, and anybody who saw my literature, it was front and foremost of everything I did. That's almost half the number of responses to the much-touted district survey, which attracted just 4,000 responses across 614,000 residents, and was riddled in my mind with flaws. In one division alone, more people endorsed One Worcestershire at the ballot box than responded across the whole county. Ballot box mandates carry weight, surveys can be skewed, and like its name, this was certainly shaped. This motion is not only ignoring my democratic verdict is somewhat hypocritical, a Worcester City, one of the very Liberal Democrat councillors backing this motion abstained. Not sure if this was an issue with the timing of meeting, or the submission of the motion, but it was a fact. At Bromsgrove's district council meeting, a councillor admitted they backed two unitaries simply because it would mean more councillors, a point we've been heard reinforced. And we heard the Liberal Democrat leader at Bromsgrove celebrating officer support for the carving up of Worcestershire. Well, of course, the officers supported it. Well, of course, the officers supported it. More councils mean more senior officer jobs, more councillors, more offices, and all on the taxpayer. Turkeys don't vote for Christmas. But colleagues, let's not forget why we're even here today. As indicated by councillor McVeigh, this whole debate has been forced on us by Labour's national agenda. Angela Rayner's White Paper ordered every county to churn out reorganisation business cases, dragging councils away from service delivery and into costly bureaucracy. And where is Angela now? Sacked, along with her complete, complete ministerial team. The entire project that started this turmoil has collapsed at Westminster. Yet Worcestershire residents are still being made to foot the bill for what is looking like Labour's failed experiment. They started off with clear guidance on size and scale, and have flip-flopped all over the place, resulting in confusion and no clear direction of what is expected or going to be delivered. Now let's look, in my mind, at what a split would deliver. A North Worcestershire unitary based on Redditch and Bromsgrove, remember Wireforest have categorically said they don't want to be involved, would be too small, too fragile, and financially unviable from day one. It would likely collapse under the weight of its own social care responsibilities, and the likely outcome, I'm afraid to say, is it gets swallowed by Birmingham, either as part of the combined authority or under some other reorganisation. Goodbye local identity, goodbye local voice. A South Worcestershire unitary, Worcester, Malvern, Wychaven, would inevitably be drawn into Gloucestershire and Herefordshire. Worcester itself would technically disappear off the map. And the proposals for so-called shared services in adults and children's social care, doomed from the start. Two different councils with different political leaders trying to manage the most sensitive services together. It would be paralysed by political conflict, leaving our most vulnerable residents to pay the price. This is not reorganisation, it destroys the identity of Worcestershire as a whole, it risks financial collapse in the North, loss of identity in the South, and utter chaos for social care services across the board. Colleagues, I said in April, and I will say again now, in my mind and that of my residents, One Worcestershire is the only model that delivers the economies of scale, keeps services sustainable, and protects our county's identity. I'm well aware of the concerns of the South. If I was sitting there, would I want that deprivation for the North? But this will split and destroy our council. There will be no more Worcestershire, there'll be no authority over it. So therefore, I urge all to reject this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Reas.
Thank you Chair. Worcester City Council debated the local government reorganisation at full council on the 2nd of September this year, and members considered both the appraisals from Mutual Ventures and reaffirmed the council's previous stated position that on sensible geographies, that the preferred option is a South Worcestershire unitary council. The council rejected this single county-wide model and agreed to work with partner districts in developing the South Worcestershire proposal for submitting to government in November. So Worcester City's official position is clear, it supports two unitaries, and Worcester placed in the South, that aligns directly with the motion now before county council, meaning we should support it. And the three main reasons based on that is, five of these six unitary authorities have agreed a North and South option, that is democracy, whether you like it or not, we're in a different shape. The shape of Worcestershire's public consultation, 47.8% favoured the two-unitary model compared with only 28.7 for a single unique countywide authority. Democratic representation, localism, and this is what is the crux of the matter of reorganisation, is about bringing power back down to the people, that local people have local control over this. Under single unitary, each councillor represented over 6,000 residents, far higher than the national average, and by contrast, the two-unitary model would mean around 4,600 residents per councillor, and often stronger links to towns and parish councils, making the decision-making more accountable and acceptable. I speak on behalf of the group, by the way. The geography and service delivery, Worcestershire is a, is a community of communities with distinct North-South economies and social identities, allowing more tailored economic housing and service strategies, given the differing pressures on public services between North and South. So will the County Hall administration listen to the will of the people? More importantly, will the senior leadership team understand the landscape and the evidence and the modelling used by PWC remains unconvincing and based on outdated data, and not bury their heads in the hands?
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you Chair. As Cabinet Member for the responsibility of local-
Just to clarify, are you speaking?
I'm speaking on behalf of myself.
Of yourself?
Yes. With local government reorganisation, I speak today to address the motion concerning the future governance structure of Worcestershire. Well, that was a quick, that was a quick three minutes. Yeah. It's a short-
Just to clarify, are you speaking for Reform or just yourself?
Reform.
Reform?
Yes. Five minutes, yeah, okay. All right, I will continue, thank you. So I speak today on behalf of Reform, oh, let's get that before we begin, to address the motion concerning the future governance structure of Worcestershire. While I appreciate the intent behind the proposal for the two council solution, I must express the extensive work I have been undertaking behind the scenes. Over recent months, I have engaged deeply with this issue. My efforts have included direct liaison with Worcestershire County Council senior leadership team, facilitating focus groups with staff, holding open discussions with district council leaders, and conducting thorough reviews of all the reports to date. This has been a collaborative, evidence-led process designed to ensure any recommendation is grounded in both operational insight and strategic foresight. From the data I've reviewed, the financial and economic case for a single unitary authority is compelling. While I acknowledge the financial triggers are not the sole consideration, they are undeniably significant and difficult to dismiss. The efficiencies streamlined governance and long-term savings outlined in multiple reports point clearly towards the benefit of a unified model. A full and detailed report will be presented to the Cabinet and council in due course. However, at this stage, I cannot support the withdrawal of the bid for a single unitary authority, nor can I endorse the proposal for a North and South Worcestershire split. To do so would be premature and contrary to the evidence I have gathered. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Boris.
Thank you Chairman. I did not campaign under One Worcestershire in the elections, but as Wychaven will know, and many in the council will know, that Wychaven voted for a South Worcestershire unitary council. However, I was part of the previous cabinet, and at that time, supported a One Worcestershire. At that time, we had government directions saying any unitary could not be less than a population of 500,000, could not split large services and create trusts, and there was to be significant savings. It is this government and their dithering and changing guidelines that means we should unite as Worcestershire, and we should show to government that we do not support what they're trying to do. I support the letter that councillor McVeigh spoke about. Now they say unitaries can be below 500,000 population, you can create shared services, and the BBC recently reported the UK government did not do its own analysis of the costs of the biggest reorganisation of council in England for decades. The government cannot make local authorities their excuse for delaying fundamental policy and legislation changes to adult social care and children's services, which are the root of the financial issues. We've also had the Shape Worcestershire engagement results showing clear evidence in many areas that our residents want their council to be local. Location does matter, and whilst areas in the South, like Breeden and Broadway, want a local council, I can understand areas like the border of Birmingham may want a One Worcestershire to protect them against Birmingham sprawl and inefficiencies. We are supporting our residents, we are supporting a local identity. This motion is politically driven by the Liberals, who themselves vote one way in one council and are different in another. This is why I will vote against this motion, and urge council that our politics should be aimed at national government, who are imposing this in haste with changing rules. At the end of the day, nobody asked for. So I would say we unite against the government, not split ourselves here where we should be looking after Worcestershire.
Thank you. Councillor James.
Thank you Chair, I echo everything that's been said by councillor Morris and councillor the other councillors. This is a fundamental question of, do we trust Labour to know what is good for our community? And the answer is no. This is the party that have taken the winter fuel off pensioners, taxed our farmers, removed choice, and removed the every, every democratic right of our people for two-tier mentalities in central government. Let us not be divided in this room because Keir Starmer and Angela Rayner, who can't afford her tax bill, have told us that we should be divided. There is a clear mandate that was made this year, that Labour are not the voice of Worcestershire, but yet we are giving in to a Labour government that wants to split our county. Let us work out what we are here for. We are here to represent our residents, who want the lowest possible council tax and the best quality service. The Lib Dems have made reference to councillors perhaps being out of touch if they had more residents. Well, I think I speak for pretty much everyone. I know what's going on in my division, I know what my residents are asking, they write to me all the time. Just because I could have a few thousand more, that doesn't mean I wouldn't be able to represent them. If this is the best the Lib Dems have, then I wouldn't bother with another motion. I will be rejecting this one full-heartedly.
Thank you. Councillor Birch.
Thank you Chairman. I don't agree with the motion purely on the basis of its being politically motivated. Once again, I didn't stand on either North-South or One Worcestershire, because in all honesty, the majority of Droywich residents care about how much they're paying for their council tax, how many potholes are in the road, what we're doing about school places. They, this is, you know, it's a trivial matter when it comes to it, because ultimately, it's an organisational thing, and all that really matters is what your council tax bill looks like every year and the services that are being delivered. That's what people ask. They don't ask when it comes to One Worcestershire or North and South. But also, in terms of, people have mentioned there's been a clear direction from the residents, but there hasn't been. There's been a survey which has had incredibly limited responses. Wychaven put out a customer service survey every year which got more responses than this one did. People didn't, people didn't bother to fill it in, people didn't have an opinion. In fact, 20% of people said that they didn't want either. But that's not an option. You know, it was a survey that ultimately has not given any sort of clear mandate. And ultimately, it's a decision that we can decide on in this chamber, but in all honesty, you can say what you like, it's the government that will decide what happens, we get very little say in this room, and the same with the district councils. For me and the residents I represent in Droywich, location mattered, we are central to Worcestershire, but ultimately, when they look at who has delivered for them, Wychaven have delivered huge economic investment, the county council slightly differently, you know, there are other areas with economic deprivation that have taken away from some of that investment. So to them, being local does matter, and that's why at Wychaven I did vote for a North and South. But ultimately, this isn't about politics, or there is no clear direction. Each of us here have to make a decision on what's best for our residents in our divisions. Ultimately, that's a decision that we have to make, but in the grand scheme of things, it doesn't really matter what we say.
Thank you. Councillor Bowen.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to speak more about the impact that splitting Worcestershire in two would have on the services we provide to children and families. I speak not just as Cabinet Member for children and families, but as someone with more than 15 years' experience in the sector. If Worcestershire is split into two, one of two things would happen to children's services. Either the service itself would have to be split into two, something that could cause huge damage and disruption to services for years to come. Or, as has been suggested, it could be retained, as it is, and shared between North and South Worcestershire. It's been said that this would basically retain the service as it is, and that this would have little impact overall on services. This is simply not true. We currently have One Worcestershire with One Children's Services. North and South Worcestershire would be two entirely separate counties, with different demographics, different needs and different priorities. There would be endless battles over allocation of resources, funding and service delivery in the two separate areas. These battles already take place on a small scale between local authorities around the country. This often takes years to resolve, and often ends up in court battles trying to decide how individual cases should be dealt with. This would be multiplied across an entire service. We have One Children's Service, it is a good service, it's on its way to becoming outstanding, and it is very well-run by and for One Worcestershire. We must not jeopardise that with this ill-thought-out, effectively political motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Price.
Thank you Chairman. This motion is built on double standards. It attacks the single unitary for not coming to full council, yet today it asks us to wade through the North and South in exactly the same way, with no evidence, no consultation and no debate. That is hypocrisy. And let's be clear where this comes from. This is not a county-wide proposal, it has been driven by the district councils. The same district councillors who voted for the placeholder in their own chambers are now sat here asking us to endorse it again. In Bromsgrove, the district council has already gone further, it has ring-fenced up to £100,000 of taxpayers' money in two £50,000 tranches to explore this idea. That's £100,000 of money not going into services, but into consultations and reports. And what was their vote? A placeholder, not a final decision, not worked up in a business plan, just a marker in the sand. So today, we are being asked to take the same placeholder, backed by the same district councillors, and in turn, turn it into county policy. And the councillors presenting this motion have brought no evidence, no financial plan, no service model, no costings, nothing. If this was a business case, it would be thrown out after page one. And then we are told the public back them. So let's look at the facts. The Shape Worcestershire survey had 4,249 people respond, that's 0.7% of residents in the county, and we are calling that a grand mandate. A handful of voices per district, numbers so small they wouldn't pass a parish survey. So today, I stand by One Worcestershire, the course that was set by the previous administration, and I believe this motion should be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hart.
Thank you very much indeed Chairman. I'll start by letting everyone into a little secret, provided you don't tell anyone. Why on earth do you think that the previous administrations have not touched this with a barge pole? And this is evidence in itself that it divides political parties, it divides elected representatives, and it divides our communities. I fundamentally believe that government should work with the willing, and government should not do this by stealth. I will be rejecting this notice of motion, because like some of my other Conservative colleagues, I didn't stand in the election in May on a One Worcestershire unitary platform, and that is entirely incorrect as to why we lost our majority. That's another matter of which I haven't got time in a couple of minutes today. I do, that was more about stopping the boats, but now Reform want to stop the schools, it would appear, but anyway. I do agree with councillor Evans when he says local government is exactly that. My starting point would be, I don't want any of this. Perfectly happy, I think we've got an excellent leader of Wireforest District Council, so very, very, very happy with the way that Wireforest is run. And I'm sure that the six district model, there are pros and cons of unitary authorities, but I would say that in Worcestershire, I would be perfectly happy for the status quo. But currently, we are where we are. And in terms of whether we have one or two, if we have to have local government reorganisation, and I'm not persuaded that it will come, because I think and agree with much of what councillor McVeigh has said, in terms of the Secretary of State moving on and Jim McMahon moving on, I think Labour will want to focus on much greater things than local government reorganisation. If we have to have a unitary, I am still persuaded on the evidence that a single unitary model is the only financially sustainable model for our residents across this county, because to dissect children's and adult social care into a North and a South or any other scenario would have huge devastating consequences on our taxpayers, and therefore, if we have to have a unitary-
Sorry, you're out of time.
-I support One Worcestershire.
Thank you. Right, councillor Ork. I've called you twice, so-
Councillor Perks. Thank you Chair, and thank you to the majority of other speakers as well. As a result, I can lose most of what I've written. I would like to point out though, and councillor Evans, the proposer of this motion, well knows, no public council taxpayer of Worcestershire has paid towards the BREP A38 scheme. knows, no public council taxpayer of Worcestershire has paid towards the Bret A38 scheme, it's DFT and Section 106 funding, as you well know. But not directly from the council, so just to point that out. I'm also quite a fan of numbers, and a number of people have spoken about the shape of Worcestershire consultation and the number of respondees to that. In Bromsgrove, just 560, that's 0.6%. Worcester, 0.6%. You mentioned a 47.8% proposal that would accept that, that's 298 people. Morven Hills, 0.8%, Wychaven, 0.8%, and Redditch, 0.9%. As my colleague has stated, 0.7% of the population of Worcestershire completed this proposal. On the back of that and everything that has been said today, I will not support this motion.
Thank you. I'm just going to clarify, councillor Ork, did you wish to make a point or...
Yes, I did want to speak, if that's okay.
We were confused for a moment, so over to you now, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. At Worcester City Council, my colleagues and I chose to abstain. We did this because it was important to make a political point that abolishing the city council is not in the interests of Worcester's residents, and that this entire process has been stacked against us from the start. Five out of six districts have now voted in favour of North and South. If you do the maths across the city, even with our small abstention, the districts and the county, roughly two-thirds of councillors have already come out in favour of the North and South. Yet, at county level, I'm hearing a change of an opinion, an excuse to criticise the Liberal Democrat group. Councillors sitting here today have voted North and South at district, yet are now going to vote for the opposite, for one unitary. We know at the county council, we have a lot more power than the districts, and we know government has sidelined the districts. And without the Liberal Democrat group bringing forward this motion today, local government reorganisation would not even have been discussed at county council level. It appears the county has no regard for the city and district councils, when that includes their residents. To me, this leaves me with a choice I cannot avoid. I want to be clear, this is a forced choice, not a free one. I do not believe bigger is better. In fact, experience shows that giant authorities run through the cabinet model, distance decision-making from local people and strip away scrutiny. This is not the kind of democracy I want. However, given the way government has framed this process, I must choose the option that is least damaging, a North and South. So today, I will vote for two authorities, and I'm unsure whether I should do this at this point or at the end, but I would like to call for a named vote at the end of this debate. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to have a point of order here, there's a lot of talking in the background, and I think it's disrespectful to people speaking, so if we could just keep that down, please. councillor Hardman.
Thank you very much, chairman. Yes, I mean, this is a very poor notice of motion, and I understand why the Liberal Democrats have bought it, because it shows a lack of leadership by reform. I mean, it seems odd that we have submitted, the last cabinet submitted a one-unitary proposal to the government, and Reform seem to have failed to back this up. But to be fair to them, they do have till, just before the budget, perhaps just after the budget, to make their views known. But I also think this is a very odd way to make such a, such a big decision, really, for the whole of the county, because normally you would expect pop a paper to come forward. I'm not aware of any of that coming forward. What is clear is the PWC report is flawed. I've yet to see, apart from Buckinghamshire, any county deliberate the savings that they have. The Liberal Democrats at Somerset, I'd point out, have made a complete dog's dinner out of it. And there is a presumption that the service provision across the councils will remain the same. I can absolutely assure you it won't. And so, with the government having admitted that it's done no financial analysis whatsoever, and has just taken the PWC report, I am extremely nervous and will be voting against this, although I do personally support the proposal for a North and a South, because what nobody talks about is the impact that it will have on council tax rates in the south of the county, and in reality, what happens is, we will pay £152,000 more in Wychaven, and Redditch will pick up the savings.
Thank you. councillor Wells.
Chairman, thank you. I think the first point I'd want to make is that the Oviens scrutiny board did recently host a session on this, and we were fortunate enough to have Price Waterhouse Cooper online. And one of the takeaways from that meeting for me, related to the question, if Worcestershire wanted to go down the two-council route, would Price Waterhouse Cooper be able to make a compelling case for us? The answer is yes. And that is what they said. They said that, you know, if you want us to make a case, we can make a case. And in truth, the district council case and their report and our report are not, you know, as Adrian just said, there are flaws contained within both reports, to be honest. And I wouldn't want to personally just be looking at those two reports, those two competing reports, in making my judgement. The one thing that we have all agreed on this morning, well, with the exception perhaps of the Labour Group, is that we are all pretty much as one in wishing to convey to the government that this is a necessary distraction, in the short term it's going to cost not save money, and it's going to take an awful lot of council officers and councillors' time when we should and need to get on with the day job. A couple of people talked about a North and South would be too small, and it wouldn't be viable. Well, if that's the case, how does Herefordshire do a little bit better than Worcestershire right now? How is it that the model that we are, many of us in clearly Reform UK have made their position clear this morning, so thank you David for that, I think we know where we're going, but Worcestershire...
councillor Wells, sorry, you're at the end of your time.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
councillor May.
Thank you very much indeed, again, chairman. So I will not be supporting this motion, because I did not go out to campaign on a One Worcestershire. I have been absolutely consistent when I served on this cabinet, show me the evidence. The Price Waterhouse Coopers report actually attributed the business rates round the wrong way. North was attributed to the South and the South to the North. What we voted for at the district council was a full piece of work by KPMG of the magnitude that PWC have done and beyond, to have that actual intelligence in terms of outcomes. None of you are speaking about outcomes. We've just been told we're not going to have a school, they're not going to educate people. What are you going to do? Yet, all of this, we are responsible for the lives of 610,000 residents, and what I would like to be in a position to do is to make an informed decision. But I can't support a motion that says I went out off the back of this to say One Worcestershire. I wouldn't, I wouldn't even wear his badge. You know, I've been very, very regimented in what I've done, I've said, show me the evidence. For a £12 saving, and the lady behind me, the point she made about this government and the shambolic way they're conducting themselves, is absolutely correct, I will always say, show me the evidence. I make evidence-based decisions. My head can tell me one thing, but I always say, and my heart tells me another, show me the evidence. This is about outcomes, and the PWC work didn't go far enough in terms of outcomes. The KPMG work, I hope, will fully address the outcomes for our residents, because what's been, we're told, been told to do will have a significant impact in the lives of the residents that we all represent. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. councillor Moorhead.
Thank you, chair. I cannot support this motion, simply because it's designed to completely remove the One Worcestershire option, so it does everything that it suggests it wants to reverse. So I cannot support this. This is political games being played with the people of Worcestershire. I have to completely agree with councillor Taylor. We've had briefings, every one of you has a full report outlining the difference from both the government criteria, appreciating that is changing, the cost-saving predictions, and how the impacts on service provision, and how it would impact those that need this most. And everything within that, the analysis that's been done, suggests that the only viable option here is One Worcestershire. I also do really worry about the quality of this survey. A number of colleagues across the political spectrum have highlighted the figures and how low they are. I also wonder that the fact that we can't even agree in this chamber, how this actually stacks up and what's best, and the government haven't got a clue about what's best, how on earth did we expect residents to complete a survey knowing what is best? Absolutely for the birds. Councillor Riass talks about this being, you know, about how we protect democracy. Well, this is a great way to absolutely not protect democracy. This is not democratic, this is being forced on us by a government, there is no democracy here. This is not devolution, it is absolutely centralisation. No one in here thinks this is right. Councillor Hart talks about the great work that's going on in Wireforest, and I have to fully support that. Districts can't agree on this, and don't think that this is the right thing to do. Our parishes don't, and I can guarantee that the people don't. And I would fully, fully support, so I'm absolutely against this motion, and I would fully support councillor McVeigh in pushing this back to the government, because it is absolute nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have councillor Casey.
Chairman, thank you. Can I begin, please, with disagreeing with councillor James? Rayner can afford her tax bill, but she chose to not pay it, and she chose to claim ignorance, ignorance of housing for which she was the secretary of state. This demonstrates the absolutely shambolic government that we currently have, and I am surprised that councillor Riass isn't too embarrassed to be able to speak on this today, particularly to say about listening to the will of the people, because clearly that is not what the government is doing. I agree wholly with what councillor McVeigh has said, so much so that I actually thought she'd watched my video back, that had a very good reception on what I said at the Wychaven Special Council, which was very well-received, and that tells us that our residents don't want this in any form, and I too did not stand on One Worcestershire. I stand for doing the best thing for my residents, and that is not having this in any sort of form. I am very disappointed in the way that the Liberals have brought this motion today, because what we should be doing is uniting against this disgraceful government, but instead this tries to score cheap political points by naming particular things about particular members of our group, so I most certainly won't be supporting this today. But what I do suggest is that we all go against this motion today and unite against this disgraceful government.
Thank you. Now going to call on councillor Miller.
Yes, thank you, chairman. Wasn't it Churchill who said, to go forward you should look back first? And when you look back, we put the vote of Brexit, and we took note of what the residents of this country were saying, and now farmers that I go to are saying, what have we done? Are we going to do the same thing with this unitary? And with the parish councils that I've been talking to about unitary over the past few months, they've quite clearly said, what should we do? They don't know. They don't understand the whole ramifications of what is being asked. But the one message that's come over very clearly is, you were elected to represent us, do your job, and stop asking me something I don't know about. So I would, and so I won't be supporting this, because I will be doing my job for my residents.
Thank you. Now going to call on councillor Josh Robinson.
Thank you, and I'm pleased to speak on behalf of my group. Just, I cannot believe, while I'm here, and in a democratic chamber, that we're being accused that this is not democracy. We're sitting in a council chamber, having a democratic vote, so if councillors, democratic councillors, don't believe this is democracy, it's quite a scary thought for the future. And it is quite clear, people out there want people to make a decision and stick to that decision unless the facts change. And so we hear all the time, and especially when I'm at Bromsgrove District Council as well, about show me the evidence, about what we need to be doing. And in that council chamber, everyone but one person voted for North and South, saying it was the best option for the people of Bromsgrove. Dispelling all the myths that get put out there by people who want another option, telling them that we're going to be part of Birmingham, absolute nonsense. There's no evidence for that at all, it's just complete scaremongering. And just to sit there and say, oh, you know what, I can't back up my vote at district because I'm sitting here at county and I'm being told which way to vote, and then saying it's politics to do it, the status quo, if you vote this down, is for One Worcestershire. So what you're doing is voting for this county council to go forward with One Worcestershire. You might think that's a good option, we can disagree, that the option that the county council has put forward through a cabinet decision, not on the council chamber, was to put a bid in for One Worcestershire. That's what officers are working on. So if you don't vote for it, and you are entitled to your view that you think One Worcestershire is better, and I'm entitled to my view that two unitaries are better, but don't sit there and pretend this is politics and, oh, I'm not supporting one way or the other. You are clearly are, the Conservative group is sitting there and saying, I didn't stand on this mandate. The Conservative group, last time, as a cabinet, voted for One Worcestershire, and they went out, and that's what their administration was doing it. And so unless they say otherwise in their literature or anything, and I don't think they did, that means that they are supportive of One Worcestershire. I don't remember seeing anything in Bromsgrove, apart from councillor Ken, talking about anything about devolution, so they must have just agreed, they must have agreed with what their people had done. We are in politics to help people, we're in politics to help at local level, I am in it to help people at local level. As I say, people can disagree on stuff, but to band around, you're playing politics, or band around that, you know, different, like basically fake news, is not a way to do politics, so I'll be happily to support this motion, and if you don't, then you are voting for One Worcestershire.
Could I raise a point of order on personal explanation, please, as I was named previously?
No, sorry, can I just clarify something? Last, the last council, when people were named...
Chair, can we just hear the point of order first?
No, it's quite important on that.
Sorry, chair.
Let me, let me, let's hear the point of order first. They told us last time that that was not allowed.
Josh, sorry. Point of order, personal information, I was named in that, and he named me as saying that the only person he was aware of that stood on One Worcestershire was me, yet I'll read you the title of the motion, following the outcome of the election in which the Conservatives lost their majority...
What are the grounds for your point of order first?
The point of order is, he's effectively, the motion is worded in a way that's totally contrary to what he's just said.
Is he lying?
Well, that's for you to decide. I don't want to go down that avenue again.
Okay, fine. Okay. Right. councillor Allen.
Yes, thank you, chair. I've listened to the debate with interest, there've been some interesting debates today. And I agree with Natalie, it would be better we sent a letter to the government, basically saying, forget it, the architects of the idea have gone for various reasons, we don't need to go into them. And I personally wish this wasn't happening, I don't think it's good for democracy, I don't think it's good for our residents at all. And incidentally, we had a vote on this a couple of weeks ago, I think it was, at Morven Hills. Let's be clear, not all councillors voted for Two Worcestershire, some voted against it, and some abstained. And I was one of those who abstained, because I don't want to give this government legitimacy in what they're doing, and I think that's the only thing we're doing. I was interested to hear that Worcester City, the Lib Dems did that, so I'm probably following in good footsteps there, I would think. I'm concerned about the five districts, and I've heard from the district council about the great public consultation, and I've just got a question, which came first, consultation or the district councillors' report? And I think if, the report came second, so how did our residents make an informed decision? Nobody's quite been able to tell me that. And I'm more interested in looking at both reports, one pushes us one way, one pushes the other way. With the same data, you would have thought they'd been able to come up with the same answers. It's a bit like my former... It's a bit like my former accountant. He told me he could make my figures do the can-can. So there you go. My biggest fear, if we go into Two Worcestershire, that we will have B2, which is the option where we're shared services. Well, my experience with Worcestershire regulatory services has been a disaster. At the moment, if I have a problem with highways, I can come to councillor Perks directly. I won't be able to, I'll have to go to a Quango. And I can guarantee you, I will just get brushed off, and it will be pointless having councillors anymore. You might as well then just have appointed officials to do this. So I'm going to abstain again because I think that's the best thing to do, and I have grave concerns about devolution. North and South Worcestershire, North could end up in Birmingham. We could be end up stuck with Warwickshire, Gloucestershire. Well, South Worcestershire will disappear. We won't have a lot.
Sorry, you're out of time. Sorry. Very good. Right, thank you. So I've got councillor Boatwright, if you'd like to make some points.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, lack of leadership. I totally agree, there's been a massive lack of leadership in this council. We've got to this point where we actually haven't voted. That's why this is here. It's here because we have not yet voted. Other councils have, we haven't. So this is why this is in front of you. Call it politically motivated all you want. I was elected to represent the people of Pershore, and I am expected to represent their views. And councils in my area have voted that they want a North and South. They have sent me here with a mandate. In terms of Somerset being mentioned, it's the ultimate version of bigger is not better. They had to take on the Conservative debt and then had to try and sort your mess out. So I find it fascinating watching the Conservative acrobatics in this debate. It's so beautiful, but did you stretch beforehand? Because you must really be hurting at this point. In terms of no evidence, there are two reports, one from PWC and one from Mutual Ventures. I recommend you read them, they're incredibly extensive. I'm not happy with these changes. There is no relationship between unitary council and efficiency. In fact, there is no relationship between costs and size of council. Do I trust Labour? No. Do I trust the Conservatives? No. But I can tell you now, there's not a single government that hasn't tried to reform local government in some way. We don't know what will happen with combined authorities with the West Midlands. So you don't, and I can tell you now, they do not want Bromsgrove. They've already told Warwickshire they don't want them, and they don't want us either. I'm sorry, but they have rejected you. Economy of scale doesn't always work. The district councils' network have shown in several studies that there is a neutral and natural levelling of costs. And basically, they start to rise. Social care does not necessarily work effectively in larger authorities, and that's a fact. And the scaremongering doesn't help. And can I just point out that accusing districts of skewing data is disrespectful to the officers who've worked so hard in creating a balanced approach, which is seen as a benchmark, an excellent case study for best practice, and is going to be used by the LGA? I think it's also incredibly disingenuous to my residents, who actually did read everything and were fully informed. And I'm glad you've enjoyed the show, councillor Monk.
Thank you. I'm now going to ask councillor Evans to sum up.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you all for a very interesting debate. I'll be brief, because I'm conscious there are other motions on the agenda today. So I'll just say thank you and happy to move to the named vote we've asked for, please.
Okay, right. For a name vote, five, five members? Okay, we have those. Right, so we'll now move to the named vote.
So you call out the names, don't you?
Thank you. So I shall now call out the names. The chair is going to vote, so I shall start with the chair. Councillor Stephen.
For.
For councillor Alcott.
For.
For councillor Allen.
Abstain.
Abstain. Councillor Amos. Against councillor Aubrey. Against councillor Bales. For councillor Bastos, not here. Councillor Bell. Against councillor Paul Bennett, isn't here, so councillor Roger Bennett. Against councillor Birch. Against councillor Boatwright-Green.
For.
For councillor Bowen. Against councillor Cleary. Against councillor Cresswell. Against councillor Crosby. Against councillor Cross. For councillor Dunkley. Against councillor Ecock. Against councillor Edmonds. Against councillor Evans.
For.
For councillor Fordington. Against councillor Foster. Against councillor Hardman. Against councillor Hart. Against councillor Hopkins. Against councillor Hume. Against councillor James. Against councillor Jean-Louis, not present, councillor Jenkins. For councillor Jones. Against councillor Keirsey. Against councillor Kent. Against councillor May. Against councillor McSweeney. For councillor McVeigh. For councillor Miller. Against councillor Ashley Monk. Against councillor Joe Monk. Against councillor Moorhead. Against councillor Morris. Against councillor Perks. Against councillor Pingree. For councillor Price. Against councillor Riaz. For councillor Josh Robinson.
For.
For councillor Linda Robinson. Against councillor Robson. For councillor Shaw. Against councillor Taylor. Against councillor Tudge. Against councillor Turner. Against councillor Udell.
Against.
Against councillor Upton, not present, councillor Victory. For councillor Wells. For councillor Wharton. Against. Thank you. In terms of the name vote, we had 15 for, 37 against, and one abstention. Therefore, the motion is not carried.
Okay, so now moving on to motion number four, three, sorry. We only have eight minutes left. So up to you whether you'd like to withdraw this motion or you'd like to carry it on. Sorry. You're going to do it? Fine. Okay, you're going to ask the proposer to put the motion. Thank you.
Okay, I'm proposing, I'm proposing the motion. I will try and cut this short. I have to, I never expected you to be defending scientific fact in the meeting of Worcestershire County Council, but here we are. Because make no mistake, this is fundamentally a question of whether or not we believe in science. Having an engineering degree, I very much believe in science. The science is behind the computers you have on your desk in front of you, the phone you have in your pocket, the car you used to drive here, and our understanding of the climate. Even with my engineering degree and specialising in this sort of technology, I don't understand all the details of how my phone works, and neither do I understand the details of the climate. But in the same way I trust that my phone works, I trust the work of climate scientists, because that's the way science works, we stand on the shoulder of giants. No one can know everything there is to know about the universe, and we trust those people who are experts. According to a 2019 peer-reviewed article, I quote, "The consensus among research scientists on anthropogenic global warming has grown to 100% based on a year of 11,602 peer-reviewed articles on climate change and global warming." There is no debate on this. That man-made climate change exists is about as close to an indisputable fact as you can get. Let's do some basic facts about the climate and climate change, and tweets from my favourite climate textbook. 2021, this summer has been the hottest on record in Europe. 2022, this summer has been the hottest on record across Europe. 2023, globally, it's been the hottest summer on record by a wide margin. 2025, I don't have to tell you about, this summer will be the warmest on record in the UK. All of the top five warmest have occurred since 2000. Please don't mention 1976, it doesn't make the top five. Let's make this more local. We live in a county which sees a lot of flooding. New Road in Worcester has been a home of Worcestershire County cricket clubs since 1896. Yet they've been thinking of moving away due to increased flooding. Of the 10 largest floods there in 125 years, eight have come since 2000. These extreme weather events are the direct result of man-made climate change. I'm sure some of the responses will claim that the climate has always changed. Well done, you're right, the climate has always changed. Climate records show that today's global warming is happening much, much faster than before. According to NASA, these natural causes are still in play today, but their influence is too small or occur too slowly to explain the rapid warming seen in recent decades. And the records refute the misinformation that natural causes are the main culprits behind climate change and some in the fossil fuel industry and white wing think tanks would likely to believe. Ice cores drawn from, show that Earth's climate response claims changes in greenhouse gas levels. Ancient evidence can also be found in tree rigs, ocean sediments, coral reefs, and layers of sedimentary rocks. This evidence reveals current warming is roughly 10 times faster than the average of ice age recovery warming. To sum up, the science on the subject is quite clear. Completely uncontroversial in the scientific community, there is almost complete scientific consensus on the subject. If you believe in science, vote for this motion. If you don't believe in science, then please don't vote against it. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. I'm now going to ask for the second. I'm just going to point out that there probably won't be an opportunity to come back in later. So, because we're going to be running out of time. So over to you if you'd like to second it now.
Well, I will happily second the motion. How long have I got?
There's five minutes.
Five whole minutes? Oh, excellent. I almost want to defer it to Matt for him. I second this motion, and I, I'm a bit shocked that I've had to bring it to council. As someone who has had the misfortune of doing a PhD, where I was hoping I'd be going in one direction and climate change pretty much scuppered it, I can safely say that it's one of those where the consensus that's happening is not just because scientists are going out of their way to go and find the data. Very often, what people are actually doing is looking at particular problems. They are looking at particular issues that they find on this planet today and are finding themselves coming up with the same answer, the causes are climate change. One of the big issues we currently have at the moment is that it's very easy to start to undermine what you are unclear of. And I say this as somebody who's done this to my own brother this week, who's a mechanic. Just because I don't necessarily understand how my car works does not mean that I'm right when I tell him I don't think he's got it right. In fact, it was very safe to say he was definitely right on that particular topic. And I think this is one of the problems when we start looking at these issues and we start to look at what experts are saying. Climate change is incredibly complicated, and it is not one field. There are literally hundreds of different scientific areas working together, all piecing this together, which means that models rarely make it 12 months before they are tweaked. It rarely gets to more than six months before someone starts to question whether the data is wholly accurate, because more data comes on board. And this is where the problem lies. Because just because we're having to change the models as we go along doesn't mean the original model was wrong. It means that it lacked the detail required to answer the question. And if we look at the models we were creating in the 1990s, where we were saying two degrees is going to be where we are going to be in some serious problems, by the late zeros, we were at 1.5 degrees and we're about to cross it. So any argument that we don't understand it and therefore it must not be correct, or people have kept changing their views, is completely just nonsense. But the one thing that really frustrates me is when we start talking about the climate has always changed. Just to be very clear, you could not live in the carboniferous. The air was not properly designed for mammals in this form. Also, I do want to know whether you get hunted by an arthropod, but that's a separate issue entirely. It's very clear that the climate has changed over time, and we are currently living in the perfect period for hominids like us to live. But if we destabilise this, yeah, probably, some of us will survive. But it won't be the society that we're currently in. And if people do want to live in this society, if they're saying that they want to live in this society and they want to have the things that they have, we need to change what we're doing, which means we need to acknowledge climate change. We need to stop spending loads of time arguing over whether we contributed 1% last year or whether we've contributed 12.5% of the total CO2 emissions over time. Because you have to remember that we're actually accumulating CO2 over time. And we went through the industrial revolution first, which means we have to leave the industrial period first. We have to lead the way. CO2 goes into the atmosphere, and it stays there, and it builds up. And I'm not saying that CO2 is the only reason our climate is changing, there are plenty of other reasons. So I really hope we'll support this motion. I hope it's really straightforward, and I hope we can actually come to some consensus.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the council if you will support us to move, to carry on this debate. Yes, thank you. First, so... I heard... I heard yes. Yep. Right. Okay, so we've got, we've got two minutes left. Yes, okay.
So if we've got a debate and you're coming up to the time, what the rules will allow is there's the speaker, and then if the time is on up, the person is allowed to sum up for two minutes. So one councillor will be able to speak literally for one minute 30 seconds. Then we move to sum up, then we go to the vote. And the first councillor I saw put their hand up.
Councillor Shaw.
Councillor Shaw. So you've got one minute 20 seconds.
Go for it.
Thank you. If you do a Google search to look for counter-arguments to man-made climate change, you cannot find any. This is your first red flag to show there is an agenda at play, and freedom to think for yourself is being censored. The climate has changed throughout millennia, way before humans existed, and likely to be continuing to change and will do so long after humans become extinct. There is plenty of geological evidence that the climate is very different to the one we now have now. It is climate change that allowed the conditions on Earth to become hospitable for us, humans, the evolution of humans to take place. It is suggested that during human time on Earth, the climate has remained fairly stable. But I would argue that the time we have had to be able to record atmospheric gases and temperatures is very short in the comparable time we now have roamed the Earth. Indeed, some of the changes in weather patterns and makeup of the atmosphere can be attributed to natural phenomena that we as humans have no influence on whatsoever. Strength of the sun, volcanic activity, tectonic plate activity, and the Milankovich's theory. The Earth's orbit around the sun is an ellipse, an oval shape, but it isn't always the same shape of an ellipse. Sometimes it is almost circular, and the Earth stays approximately the same distance from the sun throughout its orbit. At other times, the ellipse is more pronounced, so that the Earth moves closer and further away from the sun in its orbit. When the Earth is close to the sun, our climate is warmer.
Sorry, you're out of time. Right. I'm now going to ask the proposer to sum up. You've got two minutes.
Yep. Thank you, Chair. So apparently, according to this, a lack of evidence is now a conspiracy, it seems. But anyway, I feel like I've pretty much already answered most of that in my original thing. Nobody is denying that the climate has already changed, always changed. Nobody is denying that there are lots of other factors in terms of climate change. But just to repeat something I said, I said in my initial thing, that we have lots of, we have lots of evidence for...
Can we have one meeting, please?
Yeah, we have lots of evidence for climate change over a long period. And this ancient evidence reveals that current warming is occurring roughly 10 times faster than the average rate of ice age recovery warming. Yes, the climate has always changed. I said that in my initial statement. There are other factors at play, I said that in my initial statement. However, the factors that are now affecting it are completely overwhelming. Now, again, I'll repeat what I said. According to NASA, these natural causes are still in play today, but their influence is too small or occur too slowly to explain the rapid warming seen in the recent decades. I think I will just leave it there. Can I have a named vote, please?
Okay. We've got five people? Fine. Okay. Name vote.
Okay, here, here we go again. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to try and do this. Yes, five members stood. Councillor Stephen.
For.
For councillor Alcott.
For.
For councillor Allen.
For.
For councillor Amos. Against councillor Aubrey. Against councillor Bales. For councillor Bastos, not here, councillor Bell. Against councillor Paul Bennett, isn't here, councillor Roger Bennett. Against councillor Birch. For councillor Boatwright-Green.
For.
For councillor Bowen. Abstain. Councillor Cleary. Against councillor Cresswell. Against councillor Crosby. Against councillor Cross. For councillor Dunkley. Against councillor Ecock. Against councillor Edmonds. Against councillor Evans.
For.
For councillor Fordington. For councillor Foster. Against councillor Hardman. For councillor Hart. For councillor Hopkins. Against councillor Hume. Against councillor James. For councillor... For councillor Gena Jean-Louis, not present, councillor Jenkins. For councillor Jones. Against councillor Keasy. For councillor Kent. For councillor May. For councillor McSweeney. For councillor McVeigh. Thank you. Councillor Miller. For councillor Ashley Monk. Against councillor Joe Monk. Against councillor Morehead. For councillor Morris. For councillor Perks. Abstain councillor Pingree. For councillor Price. Abstain councillor Riaz. For councillor Josh Robinson.
Four.
For councillor Linda Robinson. For councillor Robson. For councillor Shaw. Against councillor Taylor. Against councillor Tudge. Against councillor Turner. Abstain councillor Udell. For councillor Upton, not present, councillor Victory. For councillor Wells. For councillor Wharton. Against. Okay, we had 28 for, 20 against, four abstaining. So the motion is carried.
Thank you. Obviously, we don't have any time now for the fourth motion. That motion was going to be about the future of the catering. Adam and I were both on the radio this morning about it. Obviously, I think this might be something that obviously anyone who can raise any motion they like. But I'm just hoping that maybe this could be something, now it's got some airing in the public, that maybe this could be discussed by group leaders. But I leave that to group leaders to discuss at a future date. Thank you. I hope you to read my mind. We're going for a lunch break now. How long do we normally go for this? Forty-five minutes? Half past two.
Do I need to do another one? It sounds like I do. Right, come back to order please. Thank you. We're now on to, welcome back after the lunch. We're now on the, so we're now on agenda item number seven. This is the annual report of the Chairman of the Audit and Governance Committee. Please turn to pages eleven to twenty. Members are reminded that a maximum of thirty minutes is set aside for questions and answers on the report. And I would ask therefore that you keep questions short and to the point. I'm now going to ask councillor Dan Birch, Chairman of the Audit and Governance Committee, to present the report and then invite questions on a page by page basis. Over to you, Dan.
Thank you, Chairman. The report is as presented. It's a, it's a report that looks back in terms of the activities of the Audit and Governance Committee over the prior year. There is nothing spectacular within there, but it's important to note that we continue to monitor the work programme going forward. We have had lengthy discussions about how and what we wish to discuss, including Treasury Management and the topic of training. All members have been invited to finance training in the next couple of weeks, and the Audit Committee have moved forward all of their training sessions so that they precede the next Audit and Governance Committee. That way, all members are clued up on all matters of Worcestershire County Council's finance and hopefully informed to make decisions going forward when we head to the December meeting and get the interim audit update. I'm happy to take any questions, although I'm not expecting too many.
Okay, let's hope you're right. Okay. Councillor Orcom, we're going to do, we're going to do these in batches of three, so over to you for the first one.
Chair, thank you. And I believe this is correct because I understand it to come under governance, but I'm happy to be corrected. It's just that I've looked back at council and this time last year, we had an annual report from the leader and an annual report from the chief executive. We haven't had one this year. I just wondered if that's covered by audit and governance. Thank you.
No.
Okay, that's answered that question for you, Dan. Okay, any more questions?
Same here, Mrs Mount.
No more questions? Okay. I'm going to ask people to note that. Is everyone content to note the report? Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item eight, which is question time. Please turn to questions twenty-one to twenty-four in the agenda. There are eleven questions in all. We have thirty minutes for formal question time. Each person will be able to ask their question and then return for a second question. I've got to stress that supplementary question may only be asked with the chairman's consent and if it arises directly out of the original question or the response provided. Will members please bear in mind that you are asking a question, you're not making a speech? If the thirty minutes of allocated time is not sufficient, then written answers will follow for the unanswered questions. And the last thing I'm going to say is that you, you have the option to either say, my question has read. You can abbreviate your question or you could read out the whole thing. Obviously, we'll get more questions in if we have, if you try to keep those as short as possible. And I'm also going to ask the respondents also in good faith to also try to keep their answers in a reasonably succinct manner so we can get some more questions in. So, over to the first question.
Yes, thank you, Chair. As read.
Thank you, Councillor Aron. Worcestershire On Demand has recorded that one hundred and twenty-one passengers have utilised the veteran's ID card from the launch date at the start of the new year through to the thirty-first of August twenty twenty-five. This figure represents the total number of passengers who have participated as either primary riders or accompanying passengers on any journey within this timeframe.
May I ask a supplementary? Thank you. Thank you for your answer, Councillor Perks. Would you agree with me that this is very good news that veterans are using it, but it is a shame there's been such a low take-up? Does he feel that we should continue to support our veterans with this sort of help?
Thank you. Absolutely, we should continue to support, and it's noted with regards to comms that more needs to be done, especially within certain areas, and that is being done as we speak. Thank you.
Thank you. We've now got a question from councillor Marcus Hart to councillor Amos.
Thank you, Chairman. Does a cabinet member agree with me that all businesses and residents across Worcestershire, including our rural communities, should have access to gigabit broadband? And would he kindly explain what this administration is doing to support this?
Okay, that's answered that question for you, Dan. Okay, any more questions? No more questions? Okay. I'm going to ask people to note that. Is everyone content to note the report? Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item eight, which is question time. Please turn to questions twenty-one to twenty-four in the agenda. There are eleven questions in all. We have thirty minutes for formal question time. Each person will be able to ask their question and then return for a second question. I've got to stress that supplementary question may only be asked with the chairman's consent and if it arises directly after the original question or the response provided. Will members please bear in mind that you're asking a question, you're not making a speech? If the thirty minutes of allocated time is not sufficient, then written answers will follow for the unanswered questions. And the last thing I'm going to say is that you have the option to either say, my question has read. You can abbreviate your question or you could read out the whole thing. Obviously, we'll get more questions in if you try to keep those as short as possible. And I'm also going to ask the respondents also in good faith to also try to keep their answers in a reasonably succinct manner so we can get some more questions in. So, over to the first question.
Yes, thank you, Chair. As read.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Worcestershire On Demand has recorded that one hundred and twenty-one passengers have utilised the veteran's ID card from the launch date at the start of the new year through to the thirty-first of August, twenty twenty-five. This figure represents the total number of passengers who have participated as either primary riders or accompanying passengers on any journey within this timeframe.
May I ask a supplementary? Thank you. Thank you for your answer, councillor Perks. Would you agree with me that this is very good news that veterans are using it, but it is a shame there's been such a low take-up? Does he feel that we should continue to support our veterans with this sort of help?
Thank you. Absolutely, we should continue to support. And it's noted with regards to comms that more needs to be done, especially within certain areas. And that is being done as we speak. Thank you.
Thank you. We've now got a question from councillor Marcus Hart to councillor Amos.
Thank you, Chair. Does a cabinet member agree with me that all businesses and residents across Worcestershire, including our rural communities, should have access to gigabit broadband? And would he kindly explain what this administration is doing to support this?
In thanking councillor Hart for his question, could I just please remind him that the long-held custom and practice for question time is that if a question is not reached in the thirty minutes allotted, then the cabinet member provides a written answer to the member immediately afterwards. However, on this occasion councillor Hart decided to resubmit exactly the same question from the last council and wait eight weeks for the answer. Now, I know my words of wisdom are well worth waiting for, but can we please stick to the established and well-tested procedures simply to prevent new questions from other members being crowded out by the old ones? And I can assure him, having said that, Mr. Chairman, that he doesn't have to wait eight weeks for my advice. I am happy to give him advice on many matters immediately. However, seriously, the main point of the question. I agree that businesses and residents across Worcestershire should have access to gigabit-capable broadband infrastructure. We will continue to work hard to achieve this, but do recognise that it will be a challenge for the very hardest-to-reach properties. In some of these challenging areas, it might be that different technologies or solutions need to be deployed that aren't quite gigabit-capable but do offer a vast improvement in both reliability and quality on broadband services that are currently available. The last Conservative administration, of which councillor Hart was deputy leader, never committed to all premises having access, only setting a target of ninety percent by 2027. There is a commitment from central government to reach nationwide gigabit-capable broadband coverage, aiming for at least ninety-nine percent of premises to have access by 2032 and a hundred percent as soon as possible thereafter. The target date for the ninety-nine percent to be achieved was delayed from 2030 to 2032 in June 2025 as part of the Chancellor's 2025 spending review. In Worcestershire, this target will chiefly be addressed through a combination of the deployments of commercial operators and the Building Digital UK, BDUK, managed project gigabit contracts, as well as other anticipated projects. The forty-one million Project Gigabit contract covering Worcestershire, agreed between BDUK and Openreach in January 2025, is expected to commence build in early 2026, following the detailed planning phase that is currently underway. It should also be noted that Openreach will be investing their funding into this project in addition to the forty-one million invested into Worcestershire from central government. This council recognises the importance of improving digital infrastructure for residents and businesses and is committed to reaching the local and national targets. To this end, the digital infrastructure and connectivity team are using local knowledge to support both commercial operators and BDUK to maximise the delivery of these private and public investments, whilst attempting to minimise the inevitable short-term disruption to Worcestershire residents and businesses when digging up roads and closing roads and footways. In addition and beyond this, I believe that addressing issues with mobile phone coverage as well as improvements in broadband is very, very important. So we're working to understand and improve mobile connectivity in the county and are exploring the benefits of advanced wireless technologies to support communities, key industries and the public sector to improve safety and efficiency. And finally, Mr. Chairman, and knowing how keen councillor Hart always is to learn of the successes and achievements of the new Reform UK administration. On a related matter, I'm sure he'll be pleased to know, indeed the whole council, to know that Worcestershire County Council has been shortlisted as a finalist for Digital Council of the Year at the prestigious Connected Britain Awards 2025. These awards celebrate councils that are driving innovation and shaping the future of connectivity across the UK. The council's entry highlighted its Network on Wheels project, an innovative trial designed to research and support mobile connectivity at events in rural areas. Mobile coverage has long posed a challenge for event organisers, visitors and service providers, often disrupting communication, payments and digital engagement. This project tackles this issue head-on, helping to bring reliable mobile connectivity to rural areas across the county. This initiative has already provided valuable support to a wide range of events, including the Three Counties Show at Malvern, Upton Blues Festival and the Hanbury Countryside Show.
Thank you. Is there a supplementary question?
There is, Mr. Chairman, but I do assure you in this chamber that the question won't be anywhere near as long as the answer that I have just received. I'm very grateful for the cabinet member's very comprehensive answer. And the written answer that he said could have been provided must have got clearly lost in the post. But do I interpret the cabinet member's answer that he's a little disappointed with the previous Conservative administration not to give a commitment of a hundred percent coverage? And therefore, as the cabinet member with responsibility for the new Reform administration, I interpret his answer that he's giving a commitment that there'll be therefore one hundred percent coverage across the county? And furthermore, would he kindly agree to meet with me, local residents and the parish council in the Chadley Corbett area of my division, as there are real issues around connectivity in the Musto Green and Harbington area, both in terms of broadband and also in the ability for local residents to use their mobile phone, given the lack of signal, which can in some circumstances be life and death when residents cannot contact emergency services? And finally, I think it's absolutely excellent that Worcestershire was to get forty-one million pounds for the gigabit broadband project, which was announced in January, Mr. Chairman, of this year.
Thank you, councillor Hart. No, I didn't actually say we're aiming for or will achieve one hundred percent. That is our intention, that is our hope. But there are, and everybody will know, there are very, very hard, difficult areas to reach. So we're certainly, as I said, we're aiming for at least ninety-nine percent of premises. That's the national target. If we can go beyond that, we certainly will. And obviously, on the precise answer on that very localised area, very happy to look at that and I will write to councillor Hart and make doubly sure he gets any answer that I give. But happy to give it to him verbally as well.
Thank you. We're now on to question number three, which is from councillor Nat Anmavay to councillor Crewell.
Thank you, Chair. It's a short question, so I'll read it out. Our library is just about books.
Thank you very much for the question, councillor McVey. In answer to your question, no. A lobby provides a comprehensive collection of hardcore and digital resources, offering a diverse service in trusted and welcome community venues. These venues have a unique reach into local audiences, while libys and lobby buildings are modern hubs bringing a variety of partners together at the heart of the community.
Thank you. Is there supplementary?
Certainly is. Thank you. I'm not sure about the hardcore element. I don't know where that's coming into things. But thank you for your response and I'm delighted to hear your opinion, which I'm sure all of us in this room share. You've mentioned some of the wide-ranging free resources, activities and events available to everyone from children and families to non-adjourners and everyone in between across our excellent diverse library service. So this being the case, can we seek your assurance that you, as CMR, and your fellow cabinet members will safeguard the future of our twenty-one libraries?
Yeah, and sorry about the slip of the tongue. The, yes, I've got no plans. I've got no plans.
Okay, right. Moving on rapidly to question number four. Councillor Matt Jenkins to the leader of the council.
How do I follow that? The leader is struggling to fill several places on committees and panels with Reform councillors. If they are unable to find councillors to take these places, can they she be shared between opposition councillors? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. No, I'm not struggling to fill any vacancies. There have always been vacancies in the previous four years especially with the previous administration. Along with a large number of seats to fill, we're going to fill them with some cabinet members. We have already arranged all of this. So I think next time you speak to me, you'll know that they will have all been filled by that point. It can also be said that during the May 2025 council meeting, more seats were created for Reform UK to fill, which was obviously a political game play.
Thank you. Is there a supplementary question?
Yes, not quite sure I understood all of that. I mean, my first point would be to actually disagree with you to say that there have always been vacancies. It's actually very rare. I've been here for twelve years and it's very rare to have a vacancy. Or if there is one, it's usually filled very quickly. So the fact we've had four months and there are still quite a few vacancies, it implies to me that there are several councillors here from Reform who maybe have got too many other commitments and haven't got the time and the real commitment to be a councillor at this council. So it'll be interesting that you have to have cabinet members to fill those places. So maybe some of the other councillors should be doing that. And if they haven't got the time, maybe they should be doing something else. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure if there's a question.
Or a statement?
Should they be doing something else? Maybe they should resign. Is that better?
Councillor Monk, would you like to reply to that?
Yeah, that's a bit vicious from you, councillor Jenkins. But no, I'm assured that they will fill those empty seats. And I think I'd like to invite you to sit down and look at the previous figures that I've got. And I've got the previous emails from the previous leader asking for people to fill vacancies. Thank you.
Now, moving on to question five. Councillor Richard O'Dell to the leader of the council.
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's my question regarding Tory staff fire and rehire.
Thank you, councillor O'Dell. This is a very interesting question. I think it relates to a notice of motion, fire and rehire of council staff, agenda item number eight, for those wishing to read the document online from a council meeting back in September 2024. The notice of motion set out in the agenda papers, standing in the names of yourself, Lindena, Manalcott, Beverley Nielsen and Dan Boatright-Green, expressing the objections to fire and rehire. Considering that the process was a vote in council in September 2024, when I was not present, it raises me to question the question. So I will not apologise for anything that concerns actions that took place back then and before I was leader. And furthermore, I will not consider reversing the decision.
Thank you. Is there supplementary?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Clearly, despite a change of administration, nothing really has changed. Hardly surprising when Reform MPs voted against the legislation to outlaw fire and rehire. Obviously, the difference is with the Conservative Party about personality, not policy. So can she confirm if the changes imposed by the last administration have delivered the estimated half a million pounds in savings? Or if the cost of failure to legally impose the policy on all staff, with missing staff, employing agency workers, recruiting replacement staff, extra overtime and a loss of productivity, has actually caused an increase in costs?
I don't know. I'll have to have a look at that and get back to you then, councillor O'Dell, because you seem to have all the maths. So we'll have a look at that together. Yes?
I think it's me asking you questions.
Your answer, Richard. Okay, we're now on to question number six, which is Sam Evans, ask cabinet member councillor Perks.
Thank you. In the interest of time, my question on the impact of house building on the infrastructure of the A38. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Evans. Worcestershire County Council will be responding to the current Bronze Grove local plan consultation. We are currently collating information from across the county council to enable a single response to be submitted, which will include the transport response. Following the conclusion of this, sorry, following the conclusion of this consultation, we'll be working with Bronze Grove District Council in detail to understand a detailed transport assessment of all of their proposed allocations to understand the highways and wider transport impacts of the plan, plus any infrastructure which is required in mitigation. The transport assessment forms a part of the evidence base for the plan and informs the infrastructure delivery plan.
Thank you. Is there supplementary?
Yes, thank you. I'm very grateful for the reply. My views are quite known on breadth, so I won't rehearse that one. But I just want to say thank you for that. Can I just check? So this response you're going to submit to the consultation, can you please just confirm that you're happy to share this with me and for it to be public with residents as well? Thank you.
Following officer guidance, then I will base it upon that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is from councillor Cross, again to councillor Perks.
Thank you, Chair. Could the cabinet member with responsibility for highways and transport please explain why council workers are being prevented from removing flags from lamp posts and graffiti from many roundabouts, despite the cabinet member having condemned them as dangerous and vandalism? Thank you.
It's a shame that I need to acknowledge this question, but in the spirit of this chamber and where we sit, thank you for the question, councillor Cross. I say it's a shame because as with local and national media, you've misquoted me. As a proud member of Reform UK and a cabinet member within the local county council, I stand firmly in the support of a united and respectful approach to celebrating our national and civic pride. We are calling for an installation of robust, high-quality flagpoles and masts, designed and manufactured right here in the United Kingdom, reflecting the craftsmanship and pride that our communities deserve. It is vital that we come together as a community to decide on the appropriate placement of these symbols, ensuring they represent us all with dignity and respect. Our national pride should never be confined to fleeting moments or mere weeks of display. There is a growing heartfelt call from across the country for meaningful change, an admonishment of previous and current governments that have allowed our national symbols and identity to be co-opted for agendas that do not serve the people. I, along with my colleagues in the cabinet, party and council, stand united with you in reclaiming that pride, restoring it to its rightful place as a beacon of unity and shared values. However, it's important we approach this with care and responsibility. When expressing our pride in country and community, we must also consider the safety of others and the impact on shared spaces. By working together through proper channels, we can ensure that our efforts enhance our towns and villages without placing additional strain on local resources or services. Let us channel the same spirit of determination, respect and pride that generations before us showed, those who worked and fought for the freedoms and communities we cherish today. This is England. We should be proud to say so and proud to show it. As part of Great Britain and the United Kingdom, our communities have thrived for generations because of the freedoms, values and opportunities that this country offers. All who live here, regardless of background or belief, are welcome when they respect those freedoms and contribute positively to society. Together, let us stand proudly, united and determined to celebrate our heritage with respect, honour and genuine community spirit.
Thank you. Is there a supplementary question?
Thank you, Chair. And yes, thank you for your response and for taking the question. I completely agree about the safety of others and the impact upon shared spaces. And I'm sure you'd agree with me that we need to be consistent as a council because we can't preach safety in words and practice or be seen to practise neglecting deeds. Either we enforce the law as it stands or we admit we've abandoned it. And regardless of how one feels about them, then clarity about the flags hung on lamp posts would be beneficial for everyone. I mean, so I believe I did not misquote you when these were described as, when roundabouts painted and flags hung was regarded as unsafe and vandalism. These words imply an urgent need for removal to protect public safety and uphold the law. Yet at the same time, council workers have apparently been instructed not to remove these flags or cover that graffiti. Could the CMR please advise whether members have been under pressure to take a permissive stance on this topic, which ultimately sends a poor message to residents, businesses and visitors about this council's commitment to public safety, the rule of law and the maintenance of our shared environment? Thank you.
Thank you again, councillor Cross. At no point did I say flags on the lamp posts were dangerous. And you can reread my statement. I suggest you do. With regards to the flags on lamp posts, we will not be taking them down unless there is an issue around safety. If they cover signage or street lights, traffic lights and the like, they will not be removed. Any other safety concern will be deemed as such and treated accordingly.
Thank you. Okay, we're now moving on to question number eight. Councillor Dan Boatright-Green to, again to councillor Perks.
I would say almost as written. For some reason, I put enjoyed in capital letters. I was very excited about public rights away, so I do apologise.
Thank you, Jesus Christ. Thank you, councillor Boatright-Green. Thank you also for the question raised by your constituent. Worcestershire County Council manage one of England's largest access networks, covering circa four thousand six hundred kilometres of footpath, bridleways and byways. The system connects the Malvern Hills, Wire Forest, Severn Valley and Cotswolds Fringe, providing essential access for recreation, tourism and sustainable travel. As a Worcestershire resident and cabinet member for highways and transport, this is something I'm incredibly proud of. For many years, there has been a backlog of work across the network. This should not be a new revelation to any in the room. However, I can confirm that it is never the intention that assets such as the county's public rights of way are not maintained in such a way as to be enjoyed safely. Community is our second tenant and so with the team, we are working to improve this position.
Thank you. Is there supplementary?
My only query is obviously, you know, we know this has been happening for a long time and I know this is not the first time I've raised this. Do we have a timeframe on where we can at least start to reduce these numbers? Because I have to say, six thousand reports really did shock me. I think it would just reassure residents if they can actually hear more specifics in terms of what we're actually going to be doing and actually what our timeframes are to reduce this.
Thank you. In terms of a timeframe, I'm not able to give a robust one at the moment. But what I will say is that as of this week, four posts have been approved to supplement that team.
Thank you. We're now on to question number nine. Councillor Riaz to the leader of the council.
Thank you, Chair. Can the leader of the council confirm the legal situation with regard to individuals displaying flags or posters on council-owned property such as lamp posts? Could she confirm any liability to the council if or failure to ensure removal resulted in a RTA road traffic accident? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Riaz. Firstly, can I just correct your terminology? It's a road traffic collision, not a road traffic accident if you speak to the police. Secondly, there have been no recorded historical such events causing such libelous claims. However, proving such would be a matter for the enforcement agencies. I can go on about roundabouts if you want. So the council has taken a pragmatic approach in relation to this. The council has learned from other authorities where flags have been taken down, only to be immediately replaced. If consistently being removed, it could result in further risk to the public and extra costs to the taxpayer, which we want to avoid. So if the council is aware of situations which would cause a health and safety issue, then action might be taken to rectify this. It is not possible to confirm if the council would be liable in such a situation. And as you can understand, the council would need to have all of the relevant information firstly. And to publicly admit liability without being in possession of all the facts could hinder the council's position. And I don't think we're going to be taking the flags down unnecessarily unless, exactly what Carl said earlier, unless they're causing a problem, which I haven't seen anything yet.
Thank you. Is there a supplementary question?
Thank you, Chair. There is a supplementary. Thank you for your response, councillor Monk. I do want to add that in my community, people are living in a real state of fear. It's not just about road safety. It is about public safety and cohesion. Online comments recently today from somebody with the username ReformItNow have stated the leftists are lucky. It's not just flags that are being hung from lamp posts, followed by now a deleted picture of people lynched and their dead bodies hanging from lamp posts. Given this climate of fear and intimidation, which is exactly what those that have put these flags up wanted to achieve, not unity and pride. And I have been on record of supporting the national flag going up, but it's been done in the wrong direction. The message of love, not hate, has been hijacked. It's absolutely by hijack that we wish, for those people that have wished to cause this unity and division. Could the leader have condemned those that are later Reform supporters who act in this manner and confirm whether the council will act to remove these flags from our property to give reassurance to all the nationalities that make Worcestershire great? All those people that work from all those countries that have made Britain and have made the United Kingdom great? Of all those Indian battalion soldiers that saved the empire in this country, that gave millions, that gave their lives to the UK, that their families are living in a state of fear? Could you condemn those, please? Thank you.
Thank you for your supplementary question, but we do live in England, which is within Great Britain, the United Kingdom. We fly our flag with pride because this is a country and that is our flag. If we're in America, we'd fly the Union, the Stars and Stripes. If I was in Greece, I'd be flying the blue flag which has got stripes on it. So I don't suggest that we take any of our flags down because they represent our country and what we are. I do not know of anybody that is part of Reform that would do that. We do not have any or acknowledge any hate words. In fact, on a daily basis, I get told myself to hang myself. So I deal with that appropriately. And I suggest that anyone that does get any sort of information or get called to do that or called upon, then they should report it to the police. But yes, we will still continue to fly the flags and we will still wear our flag badges. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to question number ten. Councillor Martin Allen to...
Yes, thank you, Chair. As read. Thank you.
In answer to that, yes, we will.
Yeah, I'm very, very, okay, Chair.
Yes, supplementary question?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. I'm very pleased to hear that and hear that you already gave that answer to councillor McVey, that you look after all the twenty-one libraries. I'm very grateful for that. You may not be aware that Upton Library has just had a new, very expensive roof. You may not be aware that Upton Library has just had a new, very expensive roof and you may also not be aware that the volunteers who run the charity, that basically keep the library going, are very concerned about the future because it is unable to meet its financial contributions and obligations to the county council. Will you agree to meet me and them at Upton's Library within the next sixty days to find a way forward to save this library? Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I am aware that there's an increase of budget which will have to be covered by the Worcestershire County Council and I'm absolutely happy to, you know, meet you at Upton Library and speak to the volunteers that work there.
Thank you. We're now moving on to the last question, which is question eleven. It's from Richard O'Dell to, again to councillor Crosswell.
Thank you, Chair. It's a question regarding civil ceremonies and I asked the question as read.
Right, we've got a full selection on our website devoted to non-statutory services. So, you know, you've got, these include naming ceremonies, renewal of vows, celebration ceremonies and a mix and match.
Thank you. Is there supplementary?
Yes, there is. Thank you, Chair, and I thank you for pointing out the website. I wonder if you can give it a bit more publicity, some of the office services we offer. But my supplementary is that the last meeting, a member of this council described people without faith or of other faiths as heathens. Will he condemn this vastly insulting allegation and will he confirm that this administration does have a secular policy in all aspects of service provision?
I mean, it's a strange question, to be honest. We live in a Christian country and I'm absolutely happy for anybody, anybody to pray how they want to pray, right? And, you know, it's where you said that in your statement there, that more people or sorry, less people identify as Christian. How many people celebrate Christmas every year? You know, that's lots and lots of people of all faiths. So, and that's a Christian ceremony.
Thank you. That's the end of the questions. Thank you very much for your time and thank you very much for the brevity of some of those questions and answers. That is really appreciated. We're now going to move on rapidly to the reports from committees. If you could turn to pages twenty five to twenty eight. And I'm going to invite Dan Birch, Chair of Audit and Governance Committee, to present the report.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I think I've covered a lot of it already. I present the report as presented.
Are there any questions for that report? I see none, so I think we're happy to note that report. Thank you very much. Right, so the last item is, this is on pages twenty nine to thirty, this is the Standards and Ethics Committee. I'm going to invite councillor Sam Evans to present the report.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, happy to move this report to council. As a member new to this council and new in the role of Chair, obviously I'm quite new to this committee, but I just want to pay my thanks to everybody that served on the committee for the previous term and to all those members who have also been serving with me so far. Happy to take any questions and I would invite any councillors if they wish to, to please do come along to our committee meetings if you are interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councillor Alcott.
Chair, thank you and thank you for the report. I'd just like to say that I welcome the recommendations, the following amendments, in particular the one to include a timescale for the monitoring officer to acknowledge a complaint five days and a timescale to conclude the filtering stage within twenty eight days. I am aware there has been quite long waits, which is quite stressful for everyone involved. So I just welcome, welcome having actual timescales. Thank you.
Would you like to respond to them?
No, I'm happy to say thank you, yes. I think it's a really important thing that the committee did discuss in some quite depth and I'm looking forward to the other reforms that are going to come forward as well when we get a chance. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I-